Ricky was the one totally against it because when they first did it for the city council, they said it just changed everything. So I didn't push it.
Okay, let's call this meeting done.
I'll take the blame on Allen.
There's nothing saying it has to be even.
Yep, correct, commando.
Well, that's how I know if we have any minutes or reports received. How about Commissioner's liaison reports, upcoming meetings?
Is that the Renegades coffee meeting?
Yeah.
You got anything like that?
Yeah.
That's about it. I don't think I'm gonna have to make an effort anything.
Now, we got Senator Wansley's motion, 10 to 11. I get to do a Jesse High School interview at 11, so. Tell them about how much.
I wonder if I gotta say that KWS tomorrow.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. Ah, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business there?
No.
Okay. New business, in-house budget discussion.
All right, what is your question? If we want to go through the requests. I did do that spreadsheet, I think I sent it to you yesterday as far as the request. Top on the list, I just put EMS. They're requesting two new paramedics and a promotion of some sort to a supervisor position. An additional supervisor position, which in my mind was going to be eight to 10,000. So I put that dollar amount in there. So salary wise, it would increase by 72,000. Of course overtime would, because you become a student 24 hour shift. Social Security, retirement, all the benefits. You're talking at a total of, and part time, that it would, okay, well, we'll just stick with the full time.
I'd like to take EMS and have a whole set of discussion on that. I think it's a whole lot more than just a couple people. I mean, there's a whole lot more issues that we have to address there that.
I think there's scheduling issues and.
And you could.
But I mean, if we want to do that today, that's fine, but I mean, it's gonna take a while.
We got control of that one. We can put it into budget and not have to do it.
You could put it in there later if you want. With the transfer out of contingency.
We can do it that way, too.
I mean, we said we no transfer in in the month account out of payroll. But, you know, we did it last year when we set up that salary reserve. We could also put it in the salary reserve if you want to do that. See three months' you know, you're talking about, and that's perfect.
The only question that I had on that was, uh, the 2% up to here. 2% COLA versus the 2% merit. Didn't look like the amounts were the same. Bring them there and what?
They're a little bit different than everybody else, because we have to do that on an hourly basis. So, I don't know if you're looking at the tab that has EMS there.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yes, but there's a little bit that we have to schedule that overtime at the higher rate, too.
Where else is it? Maybe it's on a different page or something. But you've got it all on there the same, basically, an hourly?
Yeah, it's figured on there hourly.
About like another total or something?
Yeah, I did total these here.
Yeah, I guess that's, I guess that's what I was looking at or something.
And I'll admit, I probably maybe had a hard time with that. I'm not sure where I came up with that total. It's gotta be different.
It's gotta be way more than that.
Yeah.
And even that benefit amount, that would be.
And you had some notes there, too, on that general that.
Say that again.
Well, I thought you had some notes there that I saw that showed that the cost was a lot less than that. Okay, cost of the, so if you go up from where you were, you had something highlighted in blue there. So you had the increased cost, 2% COLA, uh, was 94,608.
Which sheet?
I'm in general.
Okay.
Go up from there, up the spreadsheet. Right there, right there.
Oh, okay.
Okay. You got increased cost, 2% COLA is 94,000, 2% merit is 85,000. Cost, now what do you mean their cost of the 2% COLA, cost of 2% merit?
Um, I think this is the benefit.
This is the additional benefit cost.
That's the benefit.
Since the lower servants are security dollars.
I was, I was, I was.
Sorry, yeah.
I was just being cute to me there a little bit, so. The cost of the COLA and the merit is roughly 200,000, plus the cost of the benefits, another 32,000. Roughly, roughly.
Yes.
Just in general.
Yes. And that's what I tried to do at the bottom there, I guess, was try to get all the thumbs together. And EMS, I won't, I have a hard time with that one, since with their hours, there are scheduled overtime type situations. I really couldn't come up with the right amount there. So, if I do remember right, though, we were grand total of those in there. Kristen, you had it here, what happened there, what's 400 and some thousand? That was before.
Before benefit.
Yeah. So I kinda had that right in there, but I don't know. I don't know how you got to this. Can you get to that right there?
You can, but you have to take the recapulation of salaries, like insurance salaries.
Is this what you have here?
So that regular pay and scheduled overtime, take those.
I'd like to take a look at new positions first. We can do it by department if you want, but I'd like to see them all, with the new position requests first. See where we're at with that, and then we can take a look at, at.
How many do you want?
Fifty-one.
What we want to do is ours, 2% COLA, 2% merit, because we had new positions, you know, that made me less money with this.
That's what I meant with it. We want to build positions, or we can give raises.
Or we might be able to do a combination, but that raise may be less. And you're adding more, you're adding more payroll.
I just struggle to see where we need anybody. I struggle adding fees. We can talk about it, I can have my mind changed, so.
Well, I think, I mean, for me, the initial discussion is, are we adding more people? If we're adding more people, then that's going to change the pool of money that we have left to give raises. And I know you've got some of that in your budget, Kristen.
Right, so, new positions, the only ones that are currently in the budget is the four in the sheriff's.
Sure.
And then the ones that were approved this year already, like in the middle of the year. So, the marshal's part timer that got approved, I continued it. The recorder's person that he paid for out of his recorder trust fund. So I put that revenue and expense in there, so that's in there. And then the sheriff's.
Into ours then, or?
Yeah, so it's in both, him paying for another fund, and then it's revenue and expense in general fund. And then the two in the sheriff's department that he's paying out of his concealed carry. So those positions got carried forward, because they got added in '15, so they got added to '16.
I'm fine with those.
Yeah, I'm fine with doing the sheriff's for the.
So otherwise, new positions, the only four new positions in '16 that are not currently anywhere is the four in the sheriff.
And that's what that totals up, um, in current budget, those positions you're looking at.
Only EMS one and two, you don't have those in there, do you?
Yeah, up above is not in the current position. That's not in the.
Okay, I got something I didn't understand when you said they're not in there anywhere.
The ones at the top of her spreadsheet are requests, but they're not in my budget. The only ones that's in the current budget is those four.
So are you in new positions? Is that where we're at?
Yeah, we can do that first, we can do, um, what's in the current budget, like she said, is these positions right here. I just wanted to break it out for you to, for you to realize how much more we're adding to the total of that budget. And then, obviously, I'll go.
Okay, you got in budget, highlighted somewhere there.
1-1-3, 1-1-3 is the line.
1-1-3, never liked to have below that?
Yes.
1-1-3.
Bet you want to start there, then?
Yes.
In our budget, okay. Well, you got the right now.
Okay, so.
So is there, the CCW in there, too?
And I kinda highlighted that to the side there. Now we have an MOU for full time and a part time concealed and carrying from the sheriff's, and they're paying that from the revolving fund. That's currently in the budget, too, I didn't bring that out as far as.
So those aren't listed there, it's really new, because they're carrying forward.
And they're paying for it, yeah.
Right. Well, they're collecting fees to pay for it.
Right, right.
And, um, and to do that, I also noted, because those were added, there's no reduction to part time and/or no reduction to overtime. Which one would assume that was quarterly, but it's not. So, so you have to decide whether you want to leave that in his budget or not. We can go down. And then the next one, too, there's a treasurer, there's an additional 2,000. Cost there with benefits. And then the bailiff's, the part timer, yes, we currently have that part timer that just started last month.
Where are you going, Debbie?
Down.
You're just going all over the place, aren't you?
Going down.
Okay. The treasurer, are we okay with the $2,000 per penny?
I think so.
I am, when she first came on.
I'm good, too.
I am, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, the bailiff, I'm good with that.
Yeah, because supposedly with all the trials we've got next year, they're gonna.
Okay. The recorder, the part time.
We currently, he's paying for the part timer that he's doing out of, uh, his fund, and he currently wants to do that again next year. But he also wants to add, you guys to add another part timer, and him not pay for that out of the MOU.
What does that have to do, get it to, old files copied or updated?
That's the one he's paying for.
That's the one he's paying for, and the other part timer's gonna be to help fill in when one of fifty-four is on.
My, if you want to talk about the new one, my reasoning for not putting that one in there was the drop in his fees overall. So in 2012, he was collecting like 347,000 dollars in fees. You looked at the total amount of his budget, he was covering everything in his budget, and he was still giving some money to general fund. This year, his fees are only like at 238,000 right now, so one more month, and, so you could see the, almost $100,000 drop over a four-year.
What are the, what is this fees comprising out of it, why are we seeing a drop?
Each document that comes in. So, in my mind, there's not as many documents, obviously, when rates are low, people are refinancing like crazy, you know?
And marriage weddings are down, so marriage licenses.
We all gotta look at each other again.
I didn't look at you, I thought you said something.
I don't know, do we get to set the fees for marriage licenses, because I gotta just figure it out.
You do not.
The first one should be like $10,000. Then the second one, it should be, you add a zero, 100, so you get to three and four, start to get a license like $10,000.
Jeff, I think you're leaving about that on route, the first one should cost the.
No, because that's usually the one that costs you.
Because then you won't do it again.
Smart people won't do it. I'm a slow learner. They should just make them like unlicenses, you can renew them each year.
I think there might be some years Linda probably wouldn't renew it if.
No, thank you.
Can you pass a year?
Here's where I'm at with, uh, with the recording. We have a lot of other offices that have small staff, and it's a much smaller, we can, they just need some help.
So here you can.
Cover stuff, but I would rather upgrade the IT stuff and try to get more stuff online.
Yeah, and you can see here on the screen what I'm talking about, his, in '14, you know, we started seeing that drop take effect, and the net revenue expense that, you're about 24,000 that the county is now covering of his department expense, that before his fees were covering. So you, you go down the line, the reason you're seeing the total revenue there as 340 is because he does have some state fees that he collects, so you see that revenue coming in, but you also see that expense going out. But his fees alone that stay here have dropped from that 347 to 238, which is quite a, a large drop. Why can't the ones who just, who currently has right now, help out at the front, too, if they need it?
In his mind, we can't use that position for anything else, because he's spending his recorder's money, though the previous recorder used that money to actually fund a full-time position that works in this office. So it's just a matter of how he's interpreting those statutes. I think it was done long before.
What do you guys want to do on that?
I'm not inclined to add another one.
No, I, I appreciate everything Ralph's doing, I mean, he's really, he's turning that department around.
Well, and I definitely think that if his fees would go back up, that it's a discussion to have again, it's just at this point, I don't see adding additional expense to his budget that's gonna have to come out of general fund and then not be covered by a fee being charged to his office.
That's kinda where I'm at, too. I don't, I don't, at this time.
The only other. Okay, so.
So all that leaves really is sheriffs that he put, or that Kristen had in her budget.
Right, as far as what's currently in the budget, that's.
What do we have in, uh, part time and overtime? I'd be more inclined to look at some of those positions if we could see a reduction in overtime.
Well, and like I said, I didn't ask him if the adding of three full-time people in the jail would reduce his part-time staff in the jail, I didn't, I didn't.
Wait long enough, we'll get an email here.
I think when I asked, I asked for a priority of positions, so like if we needed to add some and not others, but the detective was the higher priority of new people. Just because he said that the current detectives are having a hard time keeping up with the case load.
He asked for 110 in part-time in the jail, and he got 110, activity today is 88, and that one's definitely higher, because we gotta do some transferring. Rachel built it with 110.
Yeah, that one's, that one's down because he can't keep them filled.
I think that's the part-time, yeah. But the overtime has.
The overtime's up, yeah.
So he can't keep what's filled?
The part-time staff in the jail. Because anytime they have a full-time position open, that part timer moves to the full-time, or that part-time physician finds something full-time outside the county and moves to. The people that are filling that part-time job are really looking for something full-time.
There's a ceiling, so.
Right, right.
And I'd be fine with adding another position if we reduced it to part-time, or overtime, or a combination thereof. And I'm okay with him zones within his budget, he's got the, basically, he's got his revenue. If he wants to buy cars with it, or if he wants to build positions with it, or whatever. However, he sees it best.
Well, if the corrections are full, I would think that.
And overtime, you know, because what we originally budgeted was 60, we mended it because his actual expenses are up to 84. We got one more month to go.
So what are you saying, Debbie, you're good with all four of those positions, that being added is on there within his budget? That Kristen's proposed.
If it keeps them in the black, I don't want to have to subsidize it from the general revenue.
But we are.
Okay, then, uh.
We're giving him 2 million and 40.
Right, but it's not changing, I mean.
No, that's, I'm fine with that part of it, he can have his law enforcement.
Right, so we're not, still not collecting an added fee either.
Right, we're not, we're not collecting the added fee. But right now, the subsidy is not changing, other than.
No, that's not, they were going to, that was on the ballot, right, then it stays at.
It never was on the ballot, it was just a promise that was made.
I'm fine with that, if there's a promise that was made with it, and we leave that the same, don't mess with it, it's working out all right, but it's still spending a good meeting. So, we can, we got the money to do it for at least a number of people to run that jail, or to patrol the roads, and to investigate things, however we need to do it, how you got to move people around. We got, I know the detectives are busy, but we've also got a department that's got inspectors busy, too, and I'm glad that they're busy. It's better than them sitting around on Facebook all day. Or watching our meetings. I like that they're watching our meetings, they care about us. Actually, if the sheriff's watching, it gets somebody close in here, it's our security.
So, the total cost there for the four new positions is 128,000 dollars, so, you know, the.
Without benefits.
Without benefits, okay. Which would be another 40%.
Yeah, 183 total, it would cost. Or, you know, if you wanted to look at just, that's a lot to swallow all in one budget, if you wanted to look at one detective, one correction officer, I don't know how that would solve, you know, and then look at it again next year about adding two more, you know, that's always an option.
But is to one, that it's gonna end up more part-time, or overtime.
I don't know the scheduling well enough to know, like, is one gonna give them someone, an additional person on each shift, or is one, I mean, is the three to cover an additional person on each shift, or is, you know, I don't know if one is gonna help as much, I don't know, I don't know about scheduling.
They're there 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, so, I would say maybe that's one per shift.
One way to do this whole exercise, when we opened up law enforcement, I mean, I was going bare bones, and then I really was going. The max amount, and we ended up somewhere in the middle, and I still struggle with adding too many people without taking away from part-time or overtime. And sometimes the overtime is, is good, give them opportunity, work some more hours, make some more money, we're not paying the, or another new employee, and that's a deal kind of way.
And I don't really see the trend, other than this year, of the overtime being high, and he kind of liking the trend of the overtime this year.
So, if I look at this sheet that the sheriff presented, I mean, you know, maybe it's something that we ask him, you know? Do you want to try to make some adjustments, or do you want to hire a bunch of new people, because I mean, there's 180,000 dollars in new people. Or there's, you know, what I see is about 100,000 dollars in adjustments, you know, like, according to this sheet. So I don't know, I don't know how that, I'd have to look at, look at the code in your budget with the COLAs and everything else, because I don't know. He probably didn't have any of that in here.
Probably have to look at that countywide then, too.
Countywide, how so?
Other people that want to add positions, but they're gonna be able to do not to add them, to use that money to spread out to other employees, and I don't think it won't be in that business, but. Because this is gonna be our, we're already on that, you know, we've seen it happen at the health department first. When one left, we used the money and spread it out, now two years later, we're back saying, we need that position back.
So.
And you've still got the high salaries, and you've got.
Where's money coming from, Abby's four positions, or one position, or whatever?
Well, I'm first one.
So the biggest change in their funded start revenue is the federal prisoner money, is that?
Well, now, I'll find a man, he can tell our jail population grows, and now we have to start housing our prisoners somewhere else. And so, I mean, we get federal money, but we're probably paying just as much to house ours somewhere else if that happens.
Well, I think at that point, you just have, you're not gonna take as many federal prisoners as you have our prisoners.
I mean, I don't know.
Then you're wrapping.
I don't, yeah, I don't know how you, maybe once you've already taken them, how do you say, take them back?
I think we only are guaranteed so many, you know, so.
I think our jail population's been healthy, but, which is one reason why he's asking for more jailers.
And we got the other program going, you know, to get people out, get them working, so.
The pre-tral release is helping.
That saves us.
So that should be helping in that department number, too.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing a report on that, or a report on it at all, I'll probably have it here in a second. But, the jail numbers were down since the pre-tral release thing, which does give us more room for federal prisoners. But whether we're housing 20 prisoners or 120, with the way the jail is set up, should take the same number of people. That's where I struggle with, too, saying we're just gonna take as many as we had in the old jail to run a new jail, because you have your loaner, you have your person in the Green Central, iPod, whatever, iPod, your pod.
The only other one that, his question, he wanted to add a stipend for our hostage negotiator, which amounts to 240 dollars a year.
So he had some changes to his stipends overall, um. So they wanted to increase, currently, we pay a stipend to slot people, they wanted to increase that stipend a little bit, they wanted to add a hostage negotiator stipend. I think it was for the detective. There. Well, that's, that's a new one.
How much was he adding, if he was in there?
Yeah, so, why, they increased the amount of the stipend, it was like $10 a month. No, 40, so they would increase that one to 40 dollars a month, in the hostage. No, forty, so they would increase that one to forty dollars a month, in the hostage negotiator. And then the detectives would get a twelve hundred dollars a year, but they're going to be two, two and three, two.
Where you at on this sheet?
Yeah, it's not on the one that you came it out, it's on the one that's attached to it, so it's...
So what's he wanted to increase, the stipend from what?
SWAT, what, SWAT, they were getting ten dollars a month to forty dollars a month.
And that's just the people that are on the SWAT. And then they wanna add a stipend for hostage negotiators at twenty dollars a month, and I think there's five of them.
Why do we have five hostage negotiators?
I guess they're certified, they want, they go to training, you know.
That's gonna go from five to twenty?
It's nothing at the moment, they wanna add a twenty dollar stipend.
It's five total, please.
Yeah. Then there's four detectives in there.
Four detectives, for what?
That would get a...
Hundred dollars a month?
Hundred dollars a month.
For what?
Being a detective.
Why would that be a stipend?
For the detective?
Yeah.
Because they don't, it's not necessarily a bump in pay when they go, and it's not something they will stay forever. So it's more of an incentive for them while they are a detective. You know, they have to go to court, they have to wear shoes, they have to, you know, do more than a regular detective does, but they're still considered a regular deputy as far as salary is concerned. They don't get a bump in pay when you become a detective. So this is trying to give them something while they are, because most detectives won't stay detective over their lifetime once they become a detective. It's like a...
So they'd rather be back on the road and be a deputy?
Huh? Or most detective sergeants?
I don't know. So he didn't want to give them more money for being a detective in their salary, because they won't necessarily stay there. They don't wanna take it back away from them. The stipend was a way to give them an incentive for being a detective while they are, but then the stipend goes away if they're not a detective anymore.
Is that taxable then?
Yes.
So it's likely to add to their pay?
Right, but it's not considered salary, so it can be taken away if they're not a detective.
But they have a stipend past detective now.
They have the classic idea that their salary is the same.
Great.
How many people are on SWAT?
So there's the overall cost, seven thousand, basically. For the SWAT total, twelve hundred for the hostage negotiators, and forty-eight hundred for the detectives.
I got five thousand seven hundred sixty would be the difference.
Maybe because we're already paying the staff, is that what you mean?
Well, I mean, sixteen people, gone from ten dollars to forty dollars, out of twelve months.
Well, that's just the difference in SWAT, so the other two are nil.
Right, the hostage, okay, I have to count that.
I think the SWAT's got five thousand, or five, because they're already, or thirty, or forty, or fifty.
Of course, the detectives are also working, that was you had.
What's that again?
The detectives at a hundred dollars a month is forty, hundred bucks, so they're already getting that, or not?
No, they're not.
They're getting nothing.
They're getting nothing at the moment.
Probably.
No, I'm good. So that's twelve grand.
Yeah, yeah.
Eleven, so... Leave it on table eight.
Oh, you're right, five thousand seven hundred sixty would be the increase in the SWAT, plus the hostage negotiator, an additional twelve hundred, plus the detective, which adds additional forty-eight hundred. All of those would then be considered as, have to be figured into their benefits, as it goes towards their retirement.
So I was just gonna ask you.
Yes, it does.
That's income, so it affects their benefits or something.
You know, what I have a problem with is, why do we have five hostage...
I asked the detective question.
I don't, I don't.
He said it's more of availability of the person if they have some sort of incentive.
Yeah, even just a couple, whatever.
Yeah, I had the...
I just, I don't, I don't think we're gonna have five situations at one time where we're gonna need all five of them.
Well, I think it's more of availability of the person, like, can they leave, if they're in the jail, can they leave to go do it? Or, or is it gonna be while they're off, you know? I think it's more of availability than it is needing them all at the same time.
Little if that happens, I would think so.
Yeah, I know.
But they would be available, I think it is available.
That's about my thing, I have a little problem with...
Well, even sixteen SWAT people, how many people are going on a raid or whatnot? Surely, we're not having to get sixteen.
They do do training, so...
Yeah, but you got to tell the way this terrorism's going on all over the place, I think.
Well, I get that, but I mean, I guess my concern there, too, is that how many people at JCPD are on the same SWAT team? We have two SWAT teams in Cole County.
Oh, we, I have all sixteen on DVD.
I don't know how that works.
You don't think the PD has their own...
Oh, they do, they do, yeah. They're all the stands between us, and they're real crazies.
I have a couple SKFs standing between the crazy.
So we're gonna keep plowing through this, or...
How much was the admin fee that we don't have in there?
It used to be a hundred and eighty-some thousand, two hundred thousand.
Okay, so pushing two.
But detectives actually have more responsibility, so, yeah, so...
I, I mean, I think that one's a good idea, I think that instead of, you know, creating a different position and changing their salary when they get there, that the stipend is a good idea to give them the incentive while they're in the position, and then it goes back off if you're...
I think if they're doing more, if they're doing more, because of the detectives, then I don't have a problem paying that.
The hundred dollars a month?
Yeah.
Just back when, uh, it first started, taking that admin fee to go on, two hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-seven thousand.
I'm just going back to the bottom line, this...
And that's two forty-five, two forty-five, now, with the computers. I think that's all we're taking from, because I'm researching the data, about that cost loss for that, uh, in there. I don't think, whenever you add one, I could have put this ratio, or, you know, we're talking about two hundred.
And again, you could do a high cost...
Can we limit how much money is spent on SWAT stipends?
How much is spent on...
Yeah, so like, in a bar line item, it says, for stipends, it says SWAT, and there's a budget number in there.
It's just added to the payroll calculation.
But they, I, I don't think it changes from the sixteen, someone would have to come off of SWAT and someone else go on. It's not like it, they keep adding people to it, and there's sixteen slots on the SWAT team, and...
That's it?
That's it.
But most times, they're not home.
Yeah, there are usually times when they're not home. Because I think even in the front sheet, it's disclosed from the sixteen spots that have the SWAT, so we can get it.
Okay, so I'm, I'm okay with the detective, a hundred dollars a month, I agree with that saying.
Yeah.
So you got it in his budget, because what I'm looking at is revenue over expenses.
It's included in my budget, yes.
That's, okay, I'm fine with that part then.
All three of those decades I have in there.
There's ten and a half million, well, thereabouts, that he has to work with. Actually, the way I see it, is once we get the budget done, it won't be a whole lot anyway, they can go and transfer in between stuff anyway, so if you go to stipends, you can...
No, not really, because I said payroll account.
Okay, stipends is in there.
He's not gonna be able to transfer it to the loan.
But yes, we did include all three of those. And I'm with them, the one I had the most trouble with was the hostage negotiator.
Maybe have Greg just explain to us, we can loan him Jeff at that.
I'll be good negotiator.
SWAT, do we wanna go from ten dollars to forty?
Speak softly, carry a big stick.
It's a big challenge. What's the reasoning for...
I think, probably just...
Ten dollars a month, is it, is it...
No, it's not, it's not, no one sent it to me.
Nobody even up forty, I mean, that's only six hundred dollars a year, you know, I mean, that's...
Yeah, I, I'm trying to... Yeah, well, I, it's, you know, potentially being a state capital, we could have...
Are you okay with that decision?
Yeah, I'd say just leave it.
We could have incidences where we need all, we need them all.
Hostage negotiator, what would you add to that?
Please get money in the budget.
But it's, it's Kirsten's budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, well, it's not the budget we're giving, but it's what he's proposed.
That's what he requested, though, right?
Currently, he hasn't requested any changes from what I submitted, so unless you're making large changes currently, his budget can cover it. But if you're going to make some other large changes, like adding an admin fee or something large change...
I think we'll look at doing that in the near future.
Then it, maybe not.
I think it's not so much as adding a full-time position would affect that, or do you wanna go back to admin?
So, I'm, I mean, I'm just a little reluctant to add four new positions. I mean, a new detective is gonna be, have to be in another car, and I'm not sure that, you know, if we were adding corrections officers to reduce part-time or overtime, I would, I would probably go that a little stronger, but we'll keep our part-time and overtime the same. Just to add more people, just to, and I'm not sure why.
You're gonna reduce overtime, part-time, or whatever, to fill those spots? It's all gotta come out of that bottom line note, and then the admin fee needs, and I don't know if we maybe start doing a portion of the admin fee from here on out?
Hey, another new chair, at least just add a new chair to our budget.
Add a new chair, and so I do that, too, I think you're going off the edge.
Have a hard time. Or you could do the detective this year and wait on the corrections officers, whatever you wanna do.
I guess where I'm at is, you know, I'm not real hip on his proposed changes and some of the increases that he's got in here. I know he did some of that with merit money last year, and we've asked him to give us a plan. I'm not real hip with on his plan. I know what he's trying to do, but I don't find him making some adjustments as, as, when we look forward. Gonna make some adjustments, but some of these adjustments are just ridiculous.
Well, you have raises, or you can have more personnel.
Well, but right now, he's got both in there, Kirsten's got both in there.
Well, I just have the four persons, none of them...
Right, 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 now, you've got two percent call-in, two percent, and four new positions. So, I guess that's a discussion, um, for us to have, you know, are we gonna limit them to pay adjustments with the merit money that's in Kirsten's budget? And the, and the problem is, the problem is, is how many people are in show department?
How many people, say, have eighty? Well, eighty full-time, are you saying?
So how, how much merit money does he have in Kirsten's budget?
Kirsten's budget?
Just in, in the law, in the law enforcement.
Both of them together, a hundred and twenty-four thousand?
No, just in merit.
Six in merit, if you weren't helping.
So he's got, he's got sixty thousand dollars that he can split amongst however many people, and he doesn't have to give anybody anything. So he could give ten people six thousand dollars, or whatever variety he wants. Whereas in the smaller offices, you know, you don't have that kind of dollars to move around, so that becomes an issue for me. You know, so you can, you know, I, I'd like some parameters on that, is, you know, okay, you've got X amount of dollars to do merit increases, and you can give up to, say, three thousand dollars to any one person, and, you know, but, I mean, he's got sixty, he can give somebody ten or twenty, I mean, hypothetically, if we let him do it.
I think that's what Mark does.
You're, well, exactly, you're exactly right.
He takes that and he turns it together.
I mean, I, and last year, I mean, we tried to give them the merit money so they could make some adjustments and move some of that. I'm okay with them doing that again this year, but I just don't wanna see them give it to a few people. Because I don't think that's right. Well, I could just, if everybody was gonna do that, I could throw away all the evaluations, and I'd probably just give everybody flat percentage.
So are we talking about the raises now, or are we talking about the positions then?
Either way, I mean...
I'm just gonna say, I'm not for any of the positions that said the detectives are barely keeping up, keeping up, but I haven't heard anybody say that we're not getting things ready for court, we're not following, if that becomes an issue, then I may be, would be more inclined. Other positions, if we reduce part-time and overtime, I'd be more inclined to do that. But that would just be moving money from the full-time to the part-time to full-time, or overtime to full-time positions. So... And you can get, keep it in check, and start getting that admin fee put in there in the next few years, too. Maybe not all at one time, but start walking it in there. There's ten million dollar pot of money, or seven and a half million, however you want. There's ten million dollar pot of money, or seven and a half million, however you want to look at it. That's a big chunk of money to be working with, so. Don't mean to be mean about it, or be a tight ass in that. That's why I'm down on it. I'd rather try to give the people we have raises and take care of that, than to be.
Well, I'd, yeah, I'd like to, I tell you what, I wouldn't want to be in law. Got to talk about.
Thankless job.
And to the effect of the, doing the admin, if we want to do that, and then when it comes back over to GR, schedule that somehow for the facility itself. I am just worried about that facility as far as, I mean, we, we have a heart of type of E building, when AC, the, you know, the air conditioning, heating, the, any changes, roofs, anything we need to remake, that is going to be changed for someday. And I will be here by some.
I don't know, the way problems we're having with that already, it's just, it's like, my God, that's our newest building. And it's just, it's like Greg's over there.
But that thing is run twenty-four seven?
Yeah, I know.
And the doors, when the doors came up too, I'm like, what the hell, well, okay, you open them this many times?
Yeah.
And it's not like your garage door won't, so.
Yeah.
Never ready for.
Those are big doors.
Big door. I mean, I, I wouldn't mind saying some, we've not had any, we had any cash flow, and I'm looking at it as strategy for the twenty-year plan. Building up any reserves, no. We've been dead to get to that.
Currently, no. We look at the twenty-year plan, last year, we had eight surplus revenue, we're expecting nine hundred and twelve thousand. This year, we're projecting it to be eight hundred and sixty-one thousand.
Nine, twelve, put on there.
So his total, total reserve is growing. Now, we budgeted to be balanced. He is currently not spending everything we budgeted, so he's coming in the surplus. We, we proposed a balance in the budget. Current revenue versus current expenditure, reserves, or any people that we balance.
I think that's where I'm going though, is to, we need to build stuff up, to be able to do stuff over there.
But I don't know if you really want it in that fund, or if you want to take it out through your fund.
Because then if it's in that fund, then the contempt is what you're saying.
I would think, potentially, yeah.
Can we put it in that fund?
Sure. But like Kristen said, it depends how you put it in our fund, whether it's totally restricted, then it becomes more of a bookkeeping, different way of looking at our financial statements, versus adding star continuously. It makes sense, because Joe Public looks at it thinking, oh my God, they're sending out a lot of money. But if you restrict it, then they know what you're thinking, you know, they know what you're wanting to use it for.
I'm not saying substantial amount either, I mean, to be able to fix things.
Right.
You know, I don't know what the lifetime on that roof is, twenty years? HVAC, HVAC units, it's all stuff that's going to be.
Greg's been working on those units a lot this last summer, he was up there a lot. And when we had that retirement from Health Department, everything goes, it's computer controlled, it was, it was so darn hot in there.
Cause if something goes wrong with it, who's paying for it?
You guys don't yet.
There's going to be money in the law enforcement fund to pay for it.
Right.
So who's going to pay for it, general? Not disagree with that, I think, you got to build up that fund, take care of that stuff.
So, are you thinking of adding a building reserve in their fund? Is that what you're thinking?
I feel okay calling it that.
If we can, go ahead.
Even if you put it in general, it's got to be used for law enforcement purposes.
Well, I guess if you put it in building reserve.
I'd rather keep it in the law enforcement fund.
Wouldn't it prove an attractive?
Right. Well, it would have to, it would have to be related to the building.
And there's other things, the only one, how many cars are three or four years ago, out of general? And that could be something else too, if you're building up that reserve, you have, you know, all of a sudden you have five or six cars, or maybe they're just a bad batch of cars, and they don't last as long and rust out or whatever. All of a sudden, you're getting five cars, and looking at quarter of a dollars. Where's that come from? No, you're going to ask general revenue to pay for it, cause you don't have to have fifty thousand.
He's got three hundred in there for cars.
Yeah, he does now, there was a matter of about two and a half years that we were paying for that out of ours too.
Right.
And, but, when his fund got healthier, we added that back. Now, his fund is healthier, we add it back, what we, the nine-one-one.
That's why I think we add the admin fee too though, by the way, that gets healthy. Cause it's healthy, we don't just start adding personnel.
But the question is, do you want that admin fee to come back to the general fund, or do you want that admin fee to, like, stay in his fund to build up the reserve you're talking about?
It wouldn't really matter. If we are more.
I'd try to spend it, but.
Well.
Probably would have, you're going to have those costs with that building.
Yeah.
You mean to put it in the building reserve?
I'm saying we could add a line in their budget called building repair.
And I wouldn't mind talking to Greg and see what kind of number he thinks would work.
Could they, use it for other things? See, that's what I, that's why, concerning, I'd rather have it in ours.
You, you can spend it within the name of the line, so if, if it's a building expense, they could, but they also have a line in their budget called building repairs, or those things. I mean, they do have a line for those smaller items, I would assume that this would be, the building reserve would be for larger buildings, I know.
Something you had on you, just for sixteen? Look at it again. For seventeen, I'd try to add it.
I think that's what Judge concerned, about adding more people, that are we not creating the ability to have that back? Whether we do the admin amount for sixteen, adding people.
We added the nine-on-one this year.
Yes.
So I would, I would prefer to wait another year to do a portion of the admin. That's where I was at on it, I wouldn't have been at sixteen for the admin. But I'd also like to be ready to start that, it's got, it has been healthy. Sales taxes up this year, that helped. But if it's flat next year? Maybe right back to. But even if it's flat, it'd still be in good shape.
And, and that's particularly what got us into the twenty-year lookout for sales tax, what's that? The beginning of this venture in the long.
Currently, its budget is stacked in front of fifteen, but there's no increase in the, that's projected for sixteen.
Yeah, you know, like two percent on the expenses, and is that where we're at then for this year, is two percent on the expenses?
No.
Isn't that a spread?
Yeah.
Like one, one and a half, but.
Going forward, not in this year's budget.
I don't know, but that's what we're estimating next year is to be. Just wondering where we are compared to it.
So if you look at the bottom, I did some calculations, just to look, like, average growth in expense, average growth in sales tax, and then growth in just the sheriff's department revenue, you can see that it, it's.
Growing.
At fairly the same rate, it's about a little over one percent a year, overall, that's everything combined, if you're looking at the total. So we plugged those same percentages in for growth in expense, and growth in sheriff's department revenue, and then we left sales tax at the last going point. So if you look beyond the fifteen budget, those are the rates we use to grow going forward.
I mean, would you say this is right, Kristen, from average growth in expense, you were at ninety-nine point six percent? And by adding those positions, you went up to way over a hundred percent?
No, but it's, it's one point three percent.
That adds up.
Well, I think, so I think it's always hard, when you start to talk about adding new people, is easy just to say no to everybody. But, I mean, now we're going to get to a point where, where it's a different fund, and we're going to start off adding a base, and we're having to make some changes there.
I'm about it the same way. Where, where are we going to fix part-time, overtime? If you need to add some people to fix that, then that's great, but he's still got a limited number of funds, or limited amount of funds.
Yeah, but it's grown too.
We can control the amount that you transfer in, out of the sales tax fund, and to the enterprise fund. That would be the only way to make sure that we aren't overextending our enterprise fund. You know what I mean, the transfer in, we keep control on that, that's about, that's what we need to do.
If it's grown that much, and it doesn't take that much to run it, then roll back the tax.
We can technically roll back the tax.
Put on a ballot. We all, we all vote to reduce your taxes, I bet that would probably pass pretty heavily.
But you could reduce the amount of charge, you know, charge.
Well, in essence, we are reducing their taxes because we're rolling it back. We, you know.
Yeah, but we're still paying half cent sales tax to roll back our property tax. We could roll it back to three eight cent, we don't need all that money, I don't, I'm not just hiring people because we got the money in there.
Okay, let's go back to law enforcement. I think you have to know as far as new positions, there are guys thinking, no new positions. And then you need to decide on the hostage negotiator. We decided, yes, on detectives, yes, on the SWAT detectives, but.
Well, you've got it in the budget, but I still like to have red covered twenty-one hundred.
Maybe a baby on that one.
So, maybe on that one.
I just.
And then currently, we're thinking, no new positions. I got a minute to go.
I mean, I'm willing to work with him as long as it reduces.
Yeah.
Part-time and overtime. And I'd also, I mean, if we just want to talk about new positions now, that's fine, I'm willing to work with him, but we need to see some reduction in part-time and overtime.
See, that, he's asking a lot, I mean, and so you, you do have to kind of.
But I'm, yeah, I'm trying to weigh some of this in.
You're going to have.
Well, I think that that should be part of the discussion, is if we want to do some kind of review and restructuring of their salary schedule, then maybe we hold off on new positions until that restructuring's done.
That might make, that might make a couple of sense.
I mean, if that's something you're thinking about doing, maybe we tackle that first, and then, once we've tackled restructuring and some source, then, then you tackle new positions at that one.
Yeah, I wasn't here when, I sat in when, when they did the public works.
I'd be good with that.
I think something like that.
Okay, we can go up to ones that were not in the current budget, now.
And then, one more question. Sure. So if we don't put that hundred and eighty-three thousand in there, is there somewhere else, or something else that you want to do with that money at the moment? Or do you just want to put it back into continuity?
I think we, I mean, I'm not ready to move it anywhere, I'm ready to have the discussion with him, to see restructure, new people, I think that's all, that's all one discussion.
So you want to first have it in there before the end of the year?
Well, so currently, it's all in the salary line. Do you want to pull it out of there at the moment and say, you know, we have this hundred and eighty-three that was for the new positions that we might use to do some restructuring? Or do you want to just pull it out and decide later what that number is? Cause right now, it, it's in the salary line. If you're not going to add new positions, then we need to pull it out of there.
One eighty-three is what benefits, I mean. I mean, I guess, I guess the number that I'm not going to have, this, this is in your budget, one eighty-three, plus the two percent COLA, the two percent merit, and the stipends. So, you know, you've got, what was it, ninety-five and eighty-seven or something, for those two? So there's another hundred seventy-five or something. And then you got one, this one eighty-three. Right? Well, there was two percent COLA was ninety-five, and the two percent merit was eighty-seven or something, I don't know why they were different, but.
Yeah, I think it was sixty-one, sixty-one was, was total overall this year.
That was sixty-one?
Like you want to merit that? Yeah.
What is that?
You're somehow not talking, you just turned it there first.
I'd rather try to fix some positions, add positions too. But I think I'd be fine with giving Greg that option. You need a position, fix it, otherwise.
Yeah, so you want merit.
Salaries.
Sixty-one, sixty-one, okay. So hundred twenty-three?
The difference in those two is Greg, Greg doesn't get the merit, but he gets the COLA. That's the difference in those two totals. That's what you're seeing in general fund, too, in elected officials.
They're going to be mad when I say I just want to be merit. Oh.
Whatever you want to do.
Yeah, the only problem I have, the only problem that I have with that, we've seen it happen, that you get the hundred twenty-one, twenty-three thousand dollars in the merit. I guarantee it's a lot of people get zero. Whether they prefer zero or not, and no matter how you do that, you're going to, you're going to create compression, or you're going to create a big gap. I don't know.
Are we?
No. And then you're going to have people that are going to give everybody the same.
But it's kind of hard for us to tell them what, do what they like.
It's not their money.
Not, I mean, they're.
No.
A elected official looks like.
Well, yeah, and they, and they constantly do crap that, I'm not going to pick on anybody in particular, but they constantly have a pool of money. When somebody quits, and they'll hire somebody in, instead of at the entry level, they'll hire them in at whatever level they got left.
Yeah, there was years that when we gave raises, with the two percent across the board, we put it on the quarter order, and everybody got two percent. And the elected officials, department heads couldn't mess with it. They got it, it was on there, and, but, then York had to run the show. But unfortunately, they did run the show because of that stuff that was happening.
So why are we going to talk about the sheriff's positions and the salaries? Are we going to do that next week?
With him, or with, or, we were thinking, maybe you want to do a salary reserve and talk about it in the year? Or do you want to talk about it before the budget?
I want to get it done before the budget's through.
I can start a meeting with them, the sheriff to come and explain.
We got a meeting next two.
Next two, Adam, do you have a line?
Then we'll get to it.
Yeah. They're speaking on the devil.
What else we got to get to today, though?
Yeah, let's.
We can't get that deep into this one right now.
There's just a few more new positions that weren't in the budget though.
Okay, so I'll do them one more.
Well, you want to save VMS, or?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to have another discussion with them. Or, I mean, I don't know if that's just me, Jeff's not one of them.
I don't know what you're going on.
TMS is my problem. Okay, well, we can go down below that, are you, talk to the sheriff right here?
Uh, well, I think we can fly through this here pretty quick, so the assessor. And he's got an open position right now, right?
Okay, I want to just tell you, I, this year, we budgeted twelve positions. He had a residential appraiser that has been open all year, has not been filled. He also had another residential appraiser leave in October, has not been filled. So we budgeted for twelve, I just don't understand what he's asking for.
I didn't get a clear answer the other day, because I kind of asked what the three, because he said he needed three to get to fourteen. Well, he's already at twelve positions, so he only needs two to get to fourteen positions. But I couldn't get a clear answer of what those open positions were.
He said one position, right?
That's the one that was open in October, I think.
Yeah, and he, he filled that.
He has not come up here with that person.
We haven't seen that.
So I don't know what he was planning on paying that person.
Oh, okay.
But, so. But, so, he's asked for fourteen, he currently has twelve, but I don't know what the position's already asking for and what salaries he's wanting to pay them. Because he talks about a commercial appraiser and a general certified appraiser, but he wants to prevent those from within eventually and get them the training that they need from his current staff. So, is he wanting residential appraisers that he can start in lower? I don't, I, I can't get a good picture of what it is that he wants.
But the years of training he says they need, I don't, I don't know.
But I did send the evaluations to him and the plan has to be in by the fifteenth, so I'm hoping that I can understand what he's talking about when he brings me that plan with the evaluation. That's all I can say at this point.
Okay, so we want to put that one off?
Yeah. Um, as far as, um...
Health?
Health.
WIC bird and environmental supervisor.
There's nothing in there?
Nope.
Okay, so the health environmental person, that's her, she's...
There you go.
Fifty thousand with all the benefits, sixty-six. And then she also runs the WIC position, twenty-five thousand estimated with WIC benefits and less by the twelve thousand in that WIC line, less by what she said she would reduce for part-time. That position would still cost you around fourteen thousand. So, total, if you add the environmental and then the WIC, you're talking adding eighty thousand, eighty-one thousand to the budget.
I'm a no on both.
Tom Strug will be the one of them too. And part of it's not, I'm not saying any, it's anybody's fault, but we eliminated the position out there. Now we're needing to fill it back up. I don't know, maybe that was our fault for eliminating it and trying to give them a little more money to fill the positions and do the extra workload. Maybe we go back to the three positions and when we fill the other ones, when they leave, they go back to that lower amount.
I was gonna say, what was the amount of the position we eliminated?
No, I sure don't. Wasn't that high?
I didn't think it was that high.
I think it was low thirties.
Low thirties?
Yeah, I think it was low thirties.
I thought it was more than that, but I thought it was like mid to low forties, but...
I mean, if the WIC, if the WIC program was truly break even, if it funded, fully funded itself, I'd be okay with that. And then, you know, maybe with this environment supervisor, we need to look at our fees again. I don't know, but we can't just keep doing all this stuff for free or subsidizing at all.
Well, we are doing onsite wastewater treatment system inspections for the state. We gotta cut back some more if we cut back there. Either we start sending the state a bill for, for talking about it.
Yeah, I get it, I mean, you know, it's all these unfunded mandates and, you know, I mean, I think we all want clean drinking water, which is basically a result of, you know, onsite wastewater. I mean, if it's not treated right and it's not inspected, you know as well as I do that everybody will be cutting corners and they'll be putting in half the, half the stuff that they're supposed to. Not everybody, but at least some. Anyway, I don't know.
That one might have been pushing forty.
Chrissy does a fantastic job.
I agree.
And I... I don't know how she does it in that building, but it seems like...
Overall budget.
I think her...
I know that she has eliminated some other, other positions. Let's kind of look at what her overall budget, as far as what we were funding from general funds prior to what we're funding now.
I just, until we get her, they're telling me that, I'm like, oh, let's, let's, let's not do this, let's not do that, let's, well... They probably have more people.
But as you...
Probably about the same.
As you can tell currently, we're spending six hundred fifty thousand. So, she did say west coast, so original budget, six ninety-three last year, so thirty-two thousand dollars.
So, if I go into one forty-one?
Didn't she have like a left, she, Chrissy, did she have one eighty-one?
Uh, yeah, we left some stuff around. I'd be more apt to do a baby step with the WIC. I'm not ready about the WIC stuff.
That one scares me because she's using WIC Medicaid at the moment to cover a portion of that person's salary. Not that I don't think, but if that would fall off, I don't know. Currently, WIC does pay for itself. So, at this position, she would have to pull money from WIC Medicaid to pay for it. And like Debbie said, as far as the number she came up with, it's not going to fully fund where that program was going funded prior.
So, we get these grants to fund these positions, and then when grants go away, the positions better go away.
WIC staff, if the funding went away, it would have to go away because it's a large staff of people.
I actually said, she's saying like seventeen hundred a month. That kind of the WIC.
Right, their, their fees for WIC is like two hundred seventy-seven thousand. But they also have five, five or six full-time employees with two part-time employees in common. Just for that program alone. Love that.
I mean, I don't know whether we're gonna put two more people there.
Yeah, so the top section areas are full-time with admin, with two seventy-seven and then select, uh, rescue and paramedics. It has that twenty-five thousand in there, but it also needs another part center because she changed her mind on how that was working. But that two seventy-seven and that forty together is that program itself, just employees.
And that's without that Q?
So, the number in Q is, would...
Okay.
Yeah.
So, are you a yes, Sam, or a no?
On.
On, uh...
Health.
Full-time or...
Weather and environmental supervisor.
Part-time and full-time on the way.
Which one is the WIC?
No, I'd leave more towards environmental supervisor. Take two, which is better, the WIC.
I said I'm a no on both, so, you guys find it out.
I just, let's just hold tight to where it is right now. And then we can figure out what we can do to get that other position, but we can't, can't give them a pay decrease because we're gonna take away some of the work limit now.
Do a small one now. It was not in the budget. I know I talked to you guys before about some upgrades due to years of service here versus new hires. Um, we're bringing new hires in, there's way out on, saw them asking for that request.
We still led the health?
I don't, we're commissioning.
Oh, I didn't hear you say this, change gears, so we're commissioning?
One oh-six.
No difference than what the treasurer has? Except for I don't think he's with base on that. Is that in the spreadsheet? Can you tell the difference?
Yeah, I'm seeing that one. I'm okay with that one.
So, we're putting the raisins in starting salary?
In current salary because the people that are starting are making more than zero. Sum up eight years' service.
Yeah, this is, I found here, the new hires are starting out more than...
What new hires are you talking about? So, if you go to the clerk's office, there are new hires starting out eight thousand more than what?
About eight thousand.
Oh, oh.
Six, five, two?
Two.
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 I don't want to talk specifically about here.
But I think our people were...
Well, we should do that.
Well, somebody wants clerk, 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 so that's what you're saying? Everybody should get the same.
Well, you're on the same grade. You should be, uh, you're in the same grade category and you've been here eight years versus a new person coming into that same grade making more. Does not make sense.
They're not coming in the same position, they're going into a different office.
Same grade.
Yeah, but a different office.
Different office, same grade.
So, I won't disagree with that, I'm just arguing that it's a different office. But I thought y'all used to argue against the clerk, as a clerk is a clerk. Didn't that used to make your hair stand up?
No, it didn't bother me.
Oh.
Did you?
Okay. I would say that grew a cold again at times.
Well, I think, I think that's where we're getting into some problems too, is that we don't currently have a salary scale. We don't have salary grades. We kind of threw our truck the window, so I think we're getting into some confusion about starting salaries and if there are grades, if there aren't grades, I mean, I don't know if we need to, you know, look at that again or...
I'm pretty early to adjustments, sir.
I'm good with the adjustments.
Said what, did?
That, spreadsheet.
What's it named?
Yeah, I don't know.
Wait, the expression. I looked at the last time, I went, oh.
I got the FT and PT.
Oh, yeah, not that.
I think you've tried it in general here on this one that we're just working on.
All right, we can talk about building parks and one of the person in parks that they would like to use in a park for eight months and then public works would take away that position, but...
It is, it screams like three or fours.
This is really fucking tough.
You didn't have either of these in there?
Um, no, I did not put the park first.
But wasn't there some salary in parks or something?
Um, so, right now, they transfer eighteen thousand dollars from parks to road bridge to cover a person in road bridge that works out at the park. Their plan was to put a full-time person into park and road bridge to reimburse for the winter month of that person so that they could use that person to cloud snow in the months when they wouldn't really necessarily be working in the park.
That's a maintenance work.
I think the problem was, we thought this was a good idea last year, but when we got into the nitty-gritty of it, it was, is someone gonna supervise this person and is this more than one person can handle in a given forty-hour week? And we got into, we bid out... Well, we bid out cutting grass to see what it would be. So, there's, there were a lot of questions still as to whether or not this was actually the most cost-effective way to do it or not, or... There was some confusion about how much stuff they currently did at parks.
And I really don't, even if you put in, at this salary, what they were, a newbie out there, that would be kind of, that wouldn't work because there'd still be the other people showing that newbie, and again, they're not really keeping track of that anymore. You know, at least now they're keeping track of it.
Is it time for the ten-thirty thing?
I forgot about that.
So, we can stop before we discuss this one since we just started it? You guys want?
I don't know, I guess like, that's what added.
Just do what you're doing, let me double check it because I have like three minutes to put it together.
They had had some part-time summer help, I think they weren't real good.
I don't want to pick on our departments just like I pick on everybody else. No. That way I won't get accused of taking care of our own and not picking on other departments and elected officials. I'll be mean to them all the same.
I guess I would like to see a detailed plan. Here's what the requirements are, here's what we have to do at every park every week, every month. Here's an average of how many hours it takes to do those things. So, you could have some sort of job description or duties that this person will be in charge of and what takes priority. I mean, if there is something at the park to do and it's a winter month with road bridges, I mean, I, I need some type, sort of idea of how this is gonna work and what the logistics are and when that person reports to who.
Well, part of the problem, and, you know, we're trying to address it, is getting rid of some of the properties that we maintain with parks. Okay, Renslake is not a park, but Parks cuts the grass. Okay, Osage City is not a park and Parks cuts the grass. Rock Hollow Road, there's a property over there, not a city park. Big Horn Drive, not a city park. So, we get rid of some of this stuff and this should decrease.
So, do we want to push this off and, and maybe this year fully attack trying to get rid of those properties and then sit down with a detailed plan of this person and...
I thought we were getting rid of all of them already besides Rens.
We have what we have.
We have, we've, we've...
Okay, we'll put it on the agenda, let's keep it moving. I think Chris had a good idea when he brought that up six months ago or so and I don't know where, if it was us just not staying on the ball, then we need to push it. Let's get rid of it.
Well, I think the director was kind of running with some of that. I think we came up with a snag on Osage City or something, we didn't have a deed or something.
That's why we're giving Chelsea.
Well, in Renslake, were we waiting to be, if they...
Yeah, Rens, I've, I said we wait and work through that one with some people yet.
I mean, the current situation is working, it's not, not working. So, if we did it for an additional year the way we're currently doing it, I don't think that's a problem. But I think that we take this year to come up with some idea of how it's gonna work and who that person's gonna report to and that kind of thing. This is the second area.
Okay, well, we'll just put it off somewhere there.
Yeah, we want to cut grass and apples next time.
And I never... Get rid of some of the properties.
Was it very expensive, the contract about ago, at one point we had to per...
Yeah, it was, it was...
Well, it's all relative, okay? Because we look at, we don't look at expenditures on hourly cost. I mean, when we buy a mower, we expense it then, whether it's a twenty thousand dollar mower or a thirty thousand dollar mower or whatever. Well, they got tractors and rush hogs and mowers and other mowers and trucks, you know? Somebody's gotta drive there. Sometimes somebody's got a full trailer there with a piece of equipment on it and they're using different stuff all over the place, so we don't look at what the total cost is or, or what the repair cost is because it's... or, or what the repair cost is because it's, it's into, you know, I don't think they even have repairs in parks, do they? It's all run through road bridge.
Only, only on the small mower.
I think if this, if that's a bit more than thirty-nine thousand dollars. Forty, forty-five.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I'm telling you.
Yeah.
We're spending, you know, if you take this figure, of course, this is twenty-six, but we had a guy that was mowing the grass that was making fifty-five plus Bennett that he made seventy grand a year.
Well, that's why Larry's asking for a maintenance, maintenance work for one.
I mean, I don't necessarily think it's a bad idea. I just don't think that.
That's going to capture everything.
Well, that it, it necessarily gives us a clear idea of what that person's going to do and like I said, who are they reporting to? Are they their own department?
There'll be a supervisor over them, but some of them will have to supervise.
And then there'll still be part-time.
And of course, you know, trash has to be picked up here around at all, all three parks, you know, we're not, so I'm not cold-canny parks.
And that's my question. In the summer months, is, is one person going to be able to do it all? I, I, I mean, I guess I want to see, I want to see more of this year, keep track of what you do at the parks exactly and how many hours and how many people and, and give me a good idea of what this person's going to have to do. But that's.
What says Larry?
Well, the only other one that I'm taking that as a no, the only other one that's still out there is the prosecutor. As far as currently, he has an MOU with him and he pays for the full-time position as a prosecuting attorney. And he also pays for a part-time. He didn't mention anything about the part-time, but he would like you guys to pick up a full-time attorney. It's where I.
Didn't we pick up some of that last year?
We picked up their salary supplement?
Yes.
That he was paying his current attorney, but we did not pick up any full.
And how much we left?
Twenty-thirty? Uh, it's.
Twenty, thirty thousand total?
Yeah.
Overall.
I mean, I had to get it.
I'm a no.
Getting a pair of the marks.
I'm in the same boat. Continue the MOU. K D Y. All right.
Sign the MOU with the military. Same way with the sheriff. I just want to clarify that. Same way with the sheriff, with his one and a half person for the concealed carry. If you don't sign the MOU, I take it out of the budget. Same with prosecutor, same with recorder.
Correct.
So the only three and a half.
And you said one and a half for the concealed carry. What was the other half?
A part-time.
We were currently paying for a part-time person. They changed that part-time or to a full-time. So you're still funding the part-time amount and then there.
And that half is, half included, half of benefits too.
The only other thing I'll ask too, as far as the two percent merit, two percent COLA, if you intend to keep that in there. Obviously, I can figure it out with the positions that are staying or not staying. Is it, do you want a stipulation on that? Everybody gets the two percent no matter how long they're with the county. You stay with the merit, you want to, you had to be with the county at least six months before you have a merit amount in their budget? Or do you just want me to put a two percent down the line? And do you still agree with that?
I agree.
Well, I think they have to be here.
Hi, guys. A year?
So I'd, I'd like to see him, I don't know, I mean, originally I was thinking a year. I mean, it'd be nice. So as I think about what I'm going to say here, I'm trying to envision the scale.
What you're going to do.
No, I'm trying to envision the scale and how we never moved the scale. So, you know, I think the position, the increase should go with the position.
So COLA should move the scale?
Yes. Now, if somebody hadn't been here for eight months, when they get to a year, maybe they should get that increase. And that, am I thinking about that wrong or?
That usually does not happen.
Right.
And it's usually based on, yeah, I mean, departments could decide to do that if they wanted, if they wanted to hold back some of their merit money. All I'm asking is for budget purposes, do you want that money to be in there for the merit for people that haven't been here? In my mind, the department probably won't give it to that person at the beginning of the year. They may use that to give to somebody else. Or I've not seen them do that, hold it for a year and then give it to that person.
So you're talking about COLA, but you're talking about here?
Yeah.
What?
Yeah. I mean, somebody's been here less than a year. I don't think she's, you know, with the merit, but, you know. But I'm talking about COLA.
COLA?
Because COLA's going to move.
The grid.
The grid.
Yes.
It should move the grid. And so I, I'm not sure how, why we do that, but.
I think as long as you, we do still have some departments that do probationary periods and they actually give increases at that point. I think that the six-month mark is a good mark to look at because some of them are still on probation, that they should not get that until they've completed that probationary period. I don't know as far as budgeting though. I think everyone would budget the COLA in there for everyone. But if you're less than six months, you don't get your COLA until you've completed your probation.
So proba-, six months is whatever, is our average probation period?
Or is it a year or what?
It's usually six months.
We consider our personnel payment, you know, six months.
Okay.
So I, I mean, I think that's where you go with the COLA. The merit's a totally different story. I mean, I think you could.
Well, I just, here again, make these adjustments to get people closer to period, I would hope, or to same, same grade. Grade, whatever you want to talk about. So, you know. So if the grid moves and somebody's been here for six months and at some point they don't get the COLA, now we hire a new person in and they're making more than that person that was just here. You get what I'm saying?
That's why we always want the COLA going any of the year, no matter how long we've been.
I mean.
I don't agree with that.
I know, but.
I mean, because what if they're here for thirty days?
And they're gone. Take out.
But again, again, your, your, your way of thinking about it is even if you hired someone thirty days later, if you moved the scale, they would start at that.
At higher wage.
That wage anyway. So really the COLA's muted at that point because it doesn't matter if you've been here thirty days or not. The scale moves.
Yeah.
True.
Well, my question is I, I assume the COLA will go with everybody at the beginning and then the grade would move. My merit is what I'm worried about in budget purposes. Do you want to use your budget? Merit on every employee are only those employees that have been here at least six months.
How many, you know, any idea how many employees we've got that have been here?
I mean, we're talking maybe ten.
Yeah.
Ten, twelve, fifteen, yeah.
Yeah, outside of that, I don't know, six months.
So that after they're here for six months, are they going to get a bump or not?
That's, there won't be any merit money in it. Yeah, well, because the department head holds back merit money for someone else, yeah. But what I'm asking you is can I pull that merit money out of that position?
So she's saying not included in the pool.
Right.
If that person has not, then they're.
I understand what she's saying. I guess that's just their bad luck because they just got hired.
Well, but I can see that if you add it in there, I mean, you're probably not going to give that person merit anyway. So you're going to give.
No, it's going to go somewhere else. I'm, I'm kind of like, Chris, I think.
There's ten thousand different ways to do it.
I know.
I'm going to be totally against doing a percent raise. I just don't like percent raises. I'd rather do a five hundred or a thousand dollar flat across the board raise for the COLA than a percent. I just think that the thousand dollars means more than somebody that makes twenty-four thousand and somebody that makes forty-eight or sixty.
And I agree. And I think we've done that in the past. If you have a balance of doing that.
We have done it that way before.
But at some point you do have to keep that difference between there.
I, I think that in some departments, you're going to create more compression doing it that way. Because really you're, you're shortening the amount in between one position to another.
Yeah, but I'm also saying that somebody that makes twenty-four thousand dollars a year down in the ditch is not getting near what the raise is if you do the percentages. You know, somebody pushing a pencil and sometimes running down the ditch is the one that's doing all the hard work. I deserve it more.
I agree with you totally. And so, you know, in the private sector, that guy has a vested interest. You probably give him a raise, you know, maybe once, maybe twice, maybe three or four times in a year. And you just keep moving him up so that you can keep him. We don't do that. You know, he makes the same as the other guy that's not doing anything. And they, they get an opportunity for advancement if somebody leaves or he may not.
But you're also hoping that if you're giving merit money also that that person
Right.
definitely getting more merit than the person sitting there doing that.
I wasn't joking a while ago when I said we could put it all in a merit pool. We can put in there that everybody will get a five hundred dollar merit raise and then the rest of it can be distributed in accordance with the director, department head, elected official. I'm not going to be adamantly opposed to doing the COLA end up merit. I just, I like the merit better. If somebody wants to fix the stuff in their department, the sheriff's department, for instance, that's one way to fix it with the merit. If they want to get rid of that compression, wind it out.
I think the only thing you don't address there though is you're never moving the scale if you only give merit. You're never increasing that starting salary. You're never creating the opportunity to pull in better employees because your starting salary is always staying at the same starting point no matter what. That COLA is a cost of living. It's increasing that to attract the people to the county.
How much has cost of living gone up in the last year?
Depends on what you look at.
It's probably gone down because gas is about half the price.
If, if you include gas, yes.
So we need to reduce everybody's pay, is what you're saying.
No. I'm also saying in the years when gas went up like four or five percent, we were not giving raises.
No.
So.
You hate the salary.
So in the, in the year, if you can afford to give a cost of living, we should give a cost of living rate. Because there's years when you couldn't afford it and we didn't give it.
So per employee at one percent? Or a two percent, you're talking about a two percent COLA? Which would amount to what? About a thousand dollars per employee?
On the average?
If y'all still want to go with the percentage thing and you've got two of you that want to vote that way and keep it that way, then let's move on. Let's.
On a thirty thousand dollar salary and two percent is six hundred dollars.
But I mean, take the total for us at the two percent, if it's going to be X amount of dollars and divided by the number of employees. Okay, so one percent is five hundred dollars per employee. So about two percent, that ain't.
Well, one percent is three hundred dollars on somebody that makes thirty a year. One percent's three hundred bucks.
Yeah, but I mean, you take the total pool of what we have for the raises.
Right.
Divide that by the number of employees to get how much per employee. I'm not worried about the percent thing. That's what I'm talking about, what did a dollar.
So what do you come up with? This is what a two percent?
Well, one percent raise across the board is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, right?
Across the board, divide that half.
Yeah, one thirty. That's two percent.
It's just salary divided by.
Well, here.
How many people? Hundred and thirty divided by how many people?
Never mind. Here's a one percent. Costs about a hundred and fifty-five thousand. What do you have in mind?
Okay, divide that by the number of employees. So about five hundred dollars for one percent raise across the board. Okay, five hundred dollar plus a one percent plus a. Well, I don't disagree about the compression thing. So I'm trying to figure out a way to.
So you're saying a flat five hundred per employee?
Right.
Then a one percent COLA?
Which would.
Both of them.
Be always about your two percent, right?
It, it would be the same cost to do the five hundred per employee plus a one percent. That would still almost cost the same as the two percent.
And then we kind of address the compression thing.
Not really. Well, yes, part of.
Part of it.
So you're compressing it and then you're relieving a portion. You're doing the five hundred dollars and moving it this way and then you're.
Thousand. And doing a full compression, partial compression.
Partial compression.
That, that, those would still be considered COLA. That five hundred, if you give it across the board to everybody, that amount would still have to be considered COLA.
That's fine. I, I'll call it what you want to. I was. I'm serious. I've gone along merit so we can try fixing things, but we can do the COLA because I'm in this group, but Chris can say it.
Now, I did send out all the department heads and elected officials that there's a two percent COLA and two percent merit. Give me your evaluations. And your claim. And obviously they know that's out there, so. Go ahead and go through.
Typically, I've, I've liked merit raises. I think in the private sector, it's not a merit raise. It's just a hand for what you get. But it's different. I like them, like the officials to be able to, the department head to be able to adjust salaries. And I think we've done that in some places. But at the same time, bigger departments and smaller departments, it doesn't, it doesn't work. Doesn't work. I mean, so as I see how it's done, I, I see it just creates more problems.
I don't know how you, how you address that.
Well, you, I mean, so, you know, as you look at that though, I mean, why not just give with four percent in the COLA?
That would be fairer to.
For smaller departments. Because if you, if you have an apartment over an office of ten or one.
I was going to say, my one is the perfect example compared to the other and to the sheriff. I mean, we're, we're restricted to only four percent. Is that the, I mean, that's it. You, whether you do an outstanding job or you do a pitiful job, the most you could get is four percent. Whereas if you're in the sheriff's department, you could get a ten percent raise if you really were working hard and had an awesome valuation and they decided that that's how they wanted to split it all. So, I mean, any way you look at it, because we're so diverse across the board, there's not a, other than, I mean, you could, I guess, create the merit pool as a total.
But then who decides?
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
There's going to be some really unfair, there's going to be some, some employees who are not going to get.
Well, and that's fine, but then it, then it comes back to us. I mean, ultimately we'd have to decide.
Well, and, and that's not fair either because you're not seeing the person's work and you're not.
No, we don't.
You're not, I mean, the true point of a merit is to reward someone for doing their job in an excellent manner.
Right.
So really their supervisor would be the one to decide who those people are.
Right. But I mean, your office and Eric's office, there's one person. So the most they can get is that two percent. And I mean, in, in the commission office and the clerk's office and the recorder's office and even the assessor's office, small departments, I mean, even in Maryland, I mean, small departments, there's very few people. That merit money doesn't amount to as much.
And I think that's why prior years, we were, we lived by the grid. We were on the grid and you didn't get merit. You got COLA and the department head didn't even mess with the COLA. So we said, no, we're giving the COLA. This is the list of who's getting it and whether it was a flat amount or there was a percent. So people could mess that grid thing up. And now we're to the point where we don't use the grid and now people are doing that, using all the merit, taking it away from some, giving it. And now we're out of whack. And guess where they're going to come? The new department head or elected official will come in here and they'll come to you guys to fix it. We got to do something so it doesn't get out of whack. But I don't know, other than a grid and not letting them have the opportunity to do a merit.
You also run into the same situation. I have two people that are in the same position and do the same job. This guy comes in every day and works
I know.
nine to five, non-stop. And this guy comes in and he comes in and he has twenty smoke breaks and he, you know. This guy comes in every day and works nine to five nonstop, and this guy comes in and he comes in and he has twenty smoke breaks, then he, you know, takes an extra hour for lunch, or you
You get rid of that person.
We have stuff. Some people that don't follow that very well.
I know. And now they're taking you on the roof, and you told them and you go to here.
And that also tells the rock star person that it doesn't matter what I come in and do, I'm gonna get the same thing as everybody else, no matter if I work hard or not. And that's, and that's into that he said.
So, and that's, and that's kind of where I was going. I mean, so with the different size and different departments, I see it as an opportunity to fix it, but at the same time, I almost think that you have to limit what that merit could be. I mean, so here's your merit pool, but no, no one person could get more than X percent.
You can cap it.
Can we do that?
What can do, or what do, we can, we're not gonna release the merit money until we get a plan.
I, I think if they're submitting a plan and, and you have to approve the plan before they get the money, then you can say that the max someone could get is five percent merit or four percent merit. I mean, you, you
I mean, so it just, yeah, it puts some restriction on there rather than, you know, because I, I agree, I mean, in, in small offices. I mean, you don't, I mean, the sheriff could give more money to one person than you have in your merit pool, or the assessor has in their merit pool.
Well, that's why our, our merit plan is a little crazy to submit, because if you get an excellent evaluation, you get the maximum allowed. That's it. That's, that's the plan. If you, if you have a standard evaluation, you get half of what the max is. If you have a poor one, you get nothing.
But it's no different than the public entity here versus a school district versus the state. I mean, depending on which division of the state you're in, of course, they have more flexibility. But there, it's not like private practice. Unfortunately, it's not. You're hired for a job, and that's the job you're gonna do. You're gonna get COLA, but to move on, to do anything different, you're gonna take a different job within the state. You're gonna take a different job within the school district. You're gonna get your education or something, and that brings you to another level, you know, on the grid. But just a free-for-all is not a good place to pick. But, and that's what we have. Without the grid, without something
I mean, that's, that's kind of where I'm at. I just don't, unless you put some kind of cap on the merit dollars. I just think it's a bigger department, so.
I'll make a motion that we do a one thousand dollar across-the-board COLA raise and a one percent merit pool to be distributed upon our approval of their plan. And I'm going to the, I just kind of, it's a personal thing on the, the three percent. So. I know it's been a good year, and I'll stop with the motion. If we get a second, we have a second. If not, we'll, like a second, we'll move on. And then I entertain any, she all had. There goes Sam. It does not like a second.
So
Or you can second it for discussion, and we can vote it out.
So Last year, we gave, what, percent and a half plus a thousand in the merit pool, or?
I think it was two percent COLA and then it was a thousand.
Two COLA and the merit pool was a thousand, which is basically four percent, is what we did last year.
Well, it almost did.
So this would be almost backwards, or opposite of that, except right into one percent. I guess if, we need to figure out, do you want to stick with the four percent? Do y'all both want to go the four percent, or base it on that?
I mean, I think, I think if we limit employees, then we, it looks like we're doing that. I mean, I think this is a year that we can get more than we've given it.
Okay, that's, that's a good justification. I can see that, then I'll go with the four percent then. How do you want to do the split? You want to do a two and two, and a percentage?
I mean, I think a two and two is not bad, but I, I kind of like to have bring the merit to us.
I mean, I like the two and two. I think, you know, I can see where the percent kind of moves everybody, so you don't get that compression. I mean, you do a flat fee and you get things tighter, you know, unfortunately, it gives
Are you writing down these motions and stuff for?
Some of them, Lloyd, you give the thousand dollars.
I don't know if we have to have
Well, I just need to write. Here's something that's thrown out there, too. Everyone's merit plan is human. I mean, we could
We're not gonna have ours, but
I mean, we could come back once the plans are here, kind of take a look and, and see if there's any of it or
Yeah, so, I mean, I like the two percent merit. I like the two percent COLA merit, for the two percent COLA, two percent merit pool. But I would like to see the plan to limit merit raises to a maximum of five percent.
Five percent of their pay?
I'd really like to do a thousand across the board, four or five hundred across the board and one percent COLA. Is that gonna really jack things up if we do a mixture of it?
A thousand COLA and one percent merit?
No, just on the COLA part, we give a five hundred dollars and one percent. That way, you eliminate some of the pressure, instead of just doing a thousand. I'd just like the flat dollar, but that's just, I mean, we can do the thousand and do the merit at two percent. I think we decided we're gonna do the four percent, two and two something, or that sort. If we're not gonna fill these positions by being aggressive.
I'm still with the two and the two.
I think I'm gonna do the two.
All right.
Any limit we want to put on it?
Well, I'd still like to do the merit money with a cap of five percent, maximum five percent to any one person.
Including the COLA or just the
No, just in the merit money.
And it's five percent of their current salary?
Well, yeah. So instead of two percent, now they could get five percent, whatever.
So total, they can accept?
Yes. Yeah, if somebody got the full five percent, then, I mean, that, that way, I mean, five percent on fifty thousand is twenty-five hundred bucks, so, you know, somebody that made fifty could get twenty-five hundred, somebody that got less, but keep somebody from getting ten or twelve or whatever. But I mean, we, I mean, that's, well, we tweak that, adjust it, whatever.
I mean, we gotta approve the plan before.
Right.
We just kind of give them our guidelines.
Yeah.
And I'm not opposed if they come up and say, look, I've got somebody I've been needing to fix for the last twenty years, and I want to do six percent. Will y'all do it? I entertain it, but I think
Let's just make sure that we're flat out. I mean, let's, you know, let's do that like we did with Penny or Commission or whatever, let's, you know.
And we didn't have any raise in two years.
So like, so like anybody that got an adjustment, like Penny or, you know, somebody else that got two thousand adjustment, that doesn't affect the COLA or the merit.
So what do you do with someone like a Penny, though? Are they still limited to the two percent merit?
Yeah.
You can't fix that, no?
Yeah. I mean, sorry.
Because, I mean, there's a big gap between a, a max of four percent and a max of seven percent.
Yeah, but you were having that gap anyway. You were having a bigger gap than that potentially, with not putting a limit on it.
Right, right.
So I think the limit on it makes it not get everything out of whack.
She's sitting out there waiting on us.
The thing about it is, is they, you know, if we continue down this plan, they, they can fix a little bit this year, they can fix a little bit the next year. They get there, but it doesn't allow them to do it all in one year.
Right.
And we can do this little by little.
I'm just throwing stuff out. If you got a better idea, I don't know, but I, I don't know how to fix your, Danny, I don't know how to fix your issue or Penny's or, you know, some of the smaller offices. Even if, like, L D's people, he's got what, four? Yeah. You know, even if one person got five percent, they would
I think she's across the hall.
Okay, is she ready? We'll get her. It'll take us half a second. What else do we have to do then?
So I, I'm gonna recap. So take the merit out of somebody who hasn't been here more than six months, and then again, the limit would be up to total of seven of their pay, would not be able to increase one in five percent. And then
Well, the merit wouldn't be more, couldn't be more.
On those positions, and then we can still go back and talk about
We still have ambulance, then we still have sheriff.
That, bring back me.
Something, something else we need to reapproach today is, um, help them off there.
Oh, crap, we ain't got that much time.
Oh, I think, I think it might be easier than you think, maybe.
Do they give money? Do they give, what, do they give anything personally?
They do, yeah.
Okay, do they? Yeah, they do, but I mean, do they do? Yeah, I, I just, I was thinking about that yesterday after I left the meeting. I thought, you know, I like to find it out. I mean, I just, I'm just wondering if, you know, we've been doing this. Yeah, I just, I just, that makes it more palatable to me if we cut them out.
Real quick, before I forget, the transfer that I handed you earlier?
Oh, yes.
So sales tax is up, and, and EMS, we only budget sixty percent of what we originally budgeted. So our transfer amount is not enough to cover because the sales tax collections are up, which means our sixty percent is up. So we're gonna be short about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in that transfer line.
So we got to transfer more than what we budgeted?
Correct.
I just said what he asked. You better explain that one.
So collections came in higher, so sixty percent is more than what we projected?
Correct. Problem to have.
These things are still on while I was gone, you know. I can go check, see if you said that. All right, where are we at?
The rest of those are for the last bill, the subdepartment. We did budget enough for the bill for the whole year. So the rest of those are to make all the bills balanced at the end of the year.
I'm not sure if state will be together.
I was waiting for her to explain. She said, she, that's not as bad.
He's like, you're a real dude when I
You're, you're breaking me in, Jeff. I'm, I'm, I don't sign anything.
Chris, that's Chris. Dad. Get it all the time, Dad.
I'm gonna send you to your room without supper. That happens a lot.
Just, just about as
You'll sleep good night, boy.
And as far as budget, now that I know the actual cost of the premiums for, for next year on, on property, liability, and our equipment, I'm up some of the budgets.
Did we need to make a motion on the, invoke on the raise? We just put it in there. That'd be, we're basically voting on it?
Okay.
I didn't remember if we voted on that? On the raises? I thought we used to vote on that.
No, I just needed some guidance for what to figure, do the final touches on it.
Yeah, you would've had about twenty percent in there last year.
Jennifer?
Yeah.
I trust you.
John, Nate?
Come in here and do your thing.
John, Nate?
Where you been? We've been waiting for you.
We've been waiting for you.
No, that's not true at all. That worked out? You might have to be there.
I've been waiting for you. Here. So, sign that. Put your ass
I gotta go.
We talked yesterday about the postage machines. These are kind of our options. The prices are self-explanatory, I kind of think, but only difference, if you voted, there's two from Pitty Bows. And then if you look at the very bottom line of cooperative procurement, the first column, that's just their straight pricing, it's not on an agreement. Second pricing is off of state image technologies. This is their straight costs. They do have a cooperative procurement agreement available to us, but they haven't got pricing back since we talked about it yesterday. And then Rico, it is off cooperative procurement. So the reason I put that on there, obviously, cooperative procurement, you're good to purchase, and then if it's not for an amount like that, you have to, you know, put it out for bid. Or someone said something yesterday about an emergency purchase, that's your priority, that's for discussion, but that's why I listed those out.
And these are all comparable machines, so Rico and Pitty Bows?
So the Pitty Bows, though, is the same machine, same options, same everything? So really, we could buy it off the cooperative agreement, but they could offer us a lower price?
Commercial bank.
I mean, I, I think as long as you're buying the exact same thing and it's off of a cooperative
There's some that are like that, so, so WISPs like, some of them are like that. So WISPs like that, they're, my impression is that the state one is not like that. Some are, you're right.
Because you're talking, you're five years.
I don't get it. So under cooperative procurement, we could spend eighty-four seventy-two, or we buy the same machine for less, for fifty-two thirty-seven? Right?
So if you went out to bid, Pitty Bows would
Well, this isn't a bid, right?
Where's eighty-four seventy-two?
This is just pricing that they gave me. To go out for bid, for the forty-five hundred dollars, it has to advertise for the three consecutive weeks, and has to bid opening not less than ten days. This is an email bid, essentially, yes.
So this is a bid?
Yes.
But you're over the forty-five, so you'd have to formal bid.
Or call the merchant.
Right. So what about the forty-five cents for the Rico? Are we comparing apples to apples?
Yes, but I want to know, is it the same?
Steve and Dawn questioned, do you guys feel like
I think it's a variable. Because if you're, if you're gonna save seven, seven thousand dollars.
We currently have a Hassler. We haven't had great luck with that, but then I was asking Dawn, and she's kind of making, correct me if I'm over seven, but the, the machine before that was right about five years, too. So maybe that's just kind of the life expectancy or something like that. I don't know.
Um, we had Pitty Bows many years ago, but I had also talked to AAA Melling, which has been in business for many years, and telling her about the problems with the machine and stuff, and she said that they recommended Pitty Bows, that there's just been a really good, you know, postage machine for them. And I know this five hundred connect, when they compared what we're currently using and all the features that we have now, this was a close comparison to it, for what our needs would be.
The maintenance cost is less. Is this what they use, Hassler, AAA?
No, they use the Pitty Bow.
They suggest the Pitty Bows?
I don't know how many machines they have in that business. She just had said that Pitty Bows, they're going to good luck with it.
Forty-five hundred?
If you go over the forty-five hundred, it has to be a formal bid.
Which involves the advertising requirement.
Well, actually, it's over six. If you go over the forty-five, you can do informal bidding. From forty-five to six, if you hit the six thousand dollar mark, you have to formal.
Just an informal bid?
It is, but you gotta be under the forty-five.
What part of this is, what part of this is a bid, though?
You can do phone bids from forty-five to ten.
What part of this is the actual bid? Yeah, like purchase price or Purchase price of a machine?
What, what you're going to spend with them in a one-time cost?
Okay, so that's only fifty-two thirty-seven?
Right.
I was gonna look real quick and tell you the math. Because it's the ninety days.
It's ninety days, and you'd have to include that first quarter. And if you're paying the annual maintenance upfront.
Who's the vendor for this? Who's the vendor for this?
Pitty Bows, the first one?
From Pitty Bows?
Yes. Pitty Bows is getting a Pitty Bows machine.
They're their own.
So it's six thousand in ninety days?
And the Rico is probably out, because I know we've spent better than ninety. Is the maintenance that we pay? Monthly maintenance?
If we bought it off of, like, Whisker or something, which they generally use Whisker, then the maintenance is on our scale.
Okay.
Again, it's kind of a not-to-exceed amount, so it's, but that's included.
Okay.
So, you could do this first one outright purchase, and the meter cost is still the under that, for six thousand.
So, you get the first ninety days, we figure it out, that it's guaranteed, and then after that, you have to pay the maintenance? So, the second ninety days, that you'd be paying one eight... Was it thirty days or ninety days?
Ninety days.
Ninety.
I'm doing...
You might be able to get by with that.
So, it'd be the five thousand two thirty-seven plus the maintenance?
Plus one eighty for what we already paid.
And then by the time you rolled off that, it'd be the one eighty plus the maintenance agreement. Yeah, you could get away with that.
Get away with it. I wanted to say we're getting away with it.
I'm just saying, for you and... This would be considered a really big...
We can legally do that.
Because you're not going over the six thousand in a ninety-day period.
We're fulfilling our statutory obligation.
We're not going to have jail sentence.
No.
I move that we purchase the PB Connect five hundred from Pitty Bowes for fifty-two thirty-seven.
I will second it, but I want to discuss that. We've got to make sure that it's all within the numbers and the parameters. I mean, we say we think it is, but...
No, there's, somebody did the math with me, but there's no making, I mean, if this is, so the initial cost is what it is, and then ninety days later, you have to pay the maintenance cost, right? Which is, yeah.
I'm fine with that. You don't have to get through...
Which is a thousand bucks.
When you went through it the first time, it sounded right, too. Might as well make sure that's the way we got it figured out.
So, we have to pay the quarterly meter rental?
Yeah. You're paying that...
So, what about any quarterly meter rental that we've already paid currently?
We're not currently paying with Pitty Bowes.
It's not to that company.
No, we're not?
Uh-uh.
Is that what the machine is? What do you have now?
Presenting...
And it's a one-year warranty, so we don't have any maintenance?
It's a ninety-day warranty.
Okay.
And so, by the time you had to pay the maintenance, the rolling ninety days would be up from the initial purchase.
I'm good with...
Any other questions?
No, sir.
Have a motion for the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to pay for the machine?
Well, I don't want to get...
Thank you, Larry.
I don't want to get into a share, a monthly payment type of deal.
Don't get mad and take the machine and go home.
You buy the machine, we'll...
Tell us, we can't use it.
Still, still asking.
No.
Well, yeah, but it's still...
That's a stipulation of my pay.
Yes, that's proper. Because he's buying it.
It still falls under the same rules, whether he pays for it or not.
Yes, yes. The statute still is in place.
Right.
So, he wants to pay for it? He wants it in his office?
No, that is not what I... I said I would pay for it as long as it's not in my office.
I mean, was there any shipping costs or anything?
She didn't... So, I would say no.
Get it here.
How soon can they get?
Well, you can go across the hall and ask that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Larry.
I'm taking a hundred dollars off a day for what I'm willing to pay. Thank God.
Will you put your stamps on?
Come on, Larry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Have a good lunch or run. Take turns.
Beautiful day in there.
Okay. You got to give any thought on the health of General Wilford or stuff? So...
I, I'm fine with continuing. This year, we're not going to pull the plug on it, which I, I've had issues with it from day one when I came up here. But by statute, we can do them, so I've never fought it too hard. But if we're going to pull the plug on them, I'd like to do that next year and give them heads up and say, you know, look, we don't feel like this is a function of government to subsidizing, so we're not going to do it any longer, which could change with different commissioners, but...
I'm okay with that. I was just asking, Chris, whether the city does that, or we're kind of separate. Not that it really matters or separate.
I don't know if it's the same statute that would affect the city since their, um, charter...
Their charter, I don't think they have a...
So, are we going to, we going to do everybody that requested? Or are we going to do everybody that was currently on the list?
I think the people that actually sent a request in, go ahead and do them, and I would give the others an opportunity.
I think they need to, they need to make a request, too, as well.
An opportunity to request.
I mean, I, yeah. Typically, I would say no to all of them, but, I mean, if we want to move forward and we want to send a formal letter that says, you know, this will be phasing us out, you know, this will be the final year.
How long do they have to get their request in, to us, first of the year?
When we went through that, historic city, or what Jefferson, downtown Jefferson City, we may get a request if they request themselves.
I mean, we have a request for Homemaker Healthcare. We have a request for the store. We have the soil, someone.
And I think soil confirmation is, however, if you're going to have to continue, I think in the 2016 budget, we'll probably move the, to general accounts and eliminate the Department one forty-three.
Are you guys wanting to do Homemaker, they ask for eight thousand? Or you want to keep my seven five hundred of where they're at?
Yeah. I'm not changing any of them. My threshold has always been five thousand. Just, that's just my personal number.
Compared to you, we can do the letter from now and then.
Yeah, yeah. Make sure that all...
This one might be a little bit harder. I'm sure she's...
I'm sure.
She knows.
I think she looks in camp, too.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm good with moving all those forward as long as we send the letter.
Wore us down with the other stuff.
I did.
That's what you got to do.
They're going to be thinking there's a button.
Thinking there's a what?
A button. That would be...
There's going to be lobby, and that's, they're going to be, they're going to be...
The easy button.
They're going to be...
So, ambulance and sheriff salary, which they'll need to talk about?
I don't know that, uh, probably if we give the sheriff guidelines are, I mean, they can come up with another plan and do what he wants.
So, you want to take what was in there for those positions and move it to...
Well, along that...
Yeah, that's the part I was talking about.
Somebody to have a discussion with him on, yeah, on those new...
Super, I think, I think EMS somewhere, I think, another supervisor probably is, is needed.
In that department, too, you can control that, and we can put a reserve there, too, if you want to see workout three months from now, or whatever, or if you want to jump right into doing another supervisor.
We've got time, we've got a minute. You guys want to dive into that a little bit, at least give us something to think about?
I, I do want to say some more about this account department. We didn't really go over it, one twenty-seven. There's lots of things in one twenty-seven. I'm envisioning changing any of them, but I want you to be aware, the animal shelters in there, the extension is in there, um, obviously nine-one-one is out.
NED?
Yes.
So, you got a total of three twenty-five in there?
No, two hundred.
Well, there's no way.
The two hundred is...
You don't have a chamber in there?
Yeah, it's a hundred fifty-one.
Well, the animal shelter's a hundred.
No, animal shelter's definitely...
Okay.
E D, but no, animal shelter's in there, it's over there.
Extension's a hundred.
Yes.
Yeah, it's in there, I mean, it's online, too. Just go in there, molest them.
Okay, all right. I thought you were saying they're all under?
No, I just want you to be aware, they're in there. I mean, we didn't talk much about them. We can go through these line by line. I just want to make sure you guys didn't have a problem with some of these, the budgets. Again, I upped the insurance to reflect exactly what the midterm renewal is. And he'll be getting out...
What's, what's that nine-one-one there?
That's where it used to come out of?
Okay.
So, that was the half that we moved this year.
Okay, so you put, you got it zeroed out?
Got zeroed out.
Okay, okay.
And so, all these little amounts, I think, yeah. The other one was the MAC and the mid-bowl. Regional planning was always a hot button, but maybe that was just Mark.
Well, MAC was always the hot button for Mark.
Yeah. So, again, all these things are in there. If you guys have a problem with those, you need to let me know, and the receivers of money, obviously, is going to be tied up in the windows.
Which you need to change that.
I just have not, you know?
So, Mark, Mark typically didn't think of that. Mark, he's had a whole lot of personal...
No, but, you know, really, being there, talking to some other elected officials, and really, that, we... Nice. You know, I, I, Kristen and I went over budget a little bit, and we did some networking, too, which we could do just to...
Go in there and add.
Right. Well, I, I mean, I, I love this point, it in our fall convention, but anyway.
I didn't, other than when I went to the Sunshine.
Mm-hmm. There's some good stuff.
Probably the other, yeah, there were...
I mean, I think RPC is what we're, you know, we put into, we get a lot of stuff.
I think, I think we need to...
So, you guys can look at that, you know, and see if there's any line items in there you're worried about.
They really...
It's the same thing here every year.
RPC is almost like another economic development entity that we fund, and so is Campo, and so is some of these other things that we...
I really want to do more with counties around this. I think, I think we're all kind of looking at the same thing. I think when we had the Hong Kong, you know, I, I had invited Osage County and Collinway County and Montauk, and I should have invited Millard County, but, I mean, they're...
You see many of those guys, not, I mean, I see like Youngerman and Dan Atwell at the RPC a lot, so...
Yeah, I, I think we need to be doing more as a, as a bigger area.
Oh, the Western District Commissioner, I mean, he's in.
I went to the one that's...
Central Commissioner.
Central. Yeah, I'm going.
Western District, aren't we?
No, we're central. I'm from...
No, I just wondered if all the changes...
I missed the one, the last one, but I went to the one before that.
Board of Mayor's Commission.
That's where I sat. Karen Miller.
West Central Commissioner.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
West Central. They're with West...
I'd probably go to those.
Well, that's what you're talking about, doing things with the big group. I just, when they have their meeting, we always have something else going on.
Yeah, it's, yeah, the last one, I couldn't make the one before that.
Hey, something I want to talk about real fast is EMS.
Okay.
They pay the fire district, the stuff that we house the ambulance in. It's supposed to be, some of them are a hundred percent of the utility, some of them is a percentage of it. We're having a hard time getting those fire districts and stuff to fill us on a timely basis. I would prefer to come up with some kind of agreement that we pay them a flat dollar amount quarterly or something, so that we can continue to pay that amount out of the budget on a regular basis, instead of waiting for them to send us their three months, or six months, or years worth of bills that they've been doing. It gets it out of the budget in a timely manner for our end, and we're not struggling the next year to catch up on, when they're six months behind on billing us for what it is. And we can reevaluate what that quarterly payment amount is, if we're falling behind or coming out ahead of what the, and I would suggest that they still submit us what the actual bills are at some point, but if we could come up with, you know, if it's three thousand dollars a quarter that we pay for utilities of those districts and stuff, just to get that out of there timely, because if you look at what we've paid out of there so far this year, it's not even close to what we budgeted, because we haven't paid...
So, how much have we paid out of there?
I know we just got one in, so it's different from when I submitted the budget.
Is it, is it that much, three thousand a quarter for all of them, or each one, or...
Um, I think two million, so that one, uh, EMS.
So, we got...
Yeah.
We got...
EMS, rent.
So, we got Rosito, we got Regional Lab...
There's three that we pay.
And we got Southwest there at the Cole County Park.
I did ask, me and Kristen talked about it before. I did talk to Mike about it, and he did talk to the fire districts about it, and they did not want to do that. They wanted to be, have it to their true expense. So, I'm just throwing that out there.
We do it.
Well, I'm fine with that, too, but then...
Every six, can we do it every six months?
Well, then, can we put down the hammer that you have ninety days after the quarter, or, you know, you can only be a quarter behind, or...
Why do they not want to do that?
Yeah.
I meant to rent. Just call it rent. Don't call it a utility reimbursement, call it rent.
Well, I guess they're scared that they're not going to get fully reimbursed for all the services. I'm not saying that I want to short them any money.
Right.
I just want to, I want it to be more timely. So, so, no, that's it. It's in there. So, anything that's not five thousand dollars there is the only part we paid out so far this year to those fire districts. So, you see one in April, and then we just did two in November. And I'm sure that none of those, like, see, there's half. I paid in November for half of yous of. Is that the first six months? Because then I'm going to be six months behind next year if they bill me.
So, they just kind of trickle in, or do you...
So, so, no, it's in there. So anything that's not $5,000 there is the only part we've paid out so far this year to those fire districts. So you see one in April and then we just did two in November. And I'm sure that none of those, like, see, there's half. I paid in November for half of these. Is that the first six months? Because then I'm going to be six months behind next year.
So they just kind of trickle in or do you?
And that was Cole County Fire. He was waiting to hear back from actually.
I mean, I don't have a problem with budgeting it, but I need a good way to budget it and this is not a good way to budget it.
We just sign a letter and just tell them, you know, give us an average of what your utility bills are and we'll just, you know, call it rent or whatever.
We currently have a contract.
Right.
And that contract specifically says you turn in all your utilities. So we have to change the contract.
I mean, like I said, I don't have a problem with paying.
They weren't getting anything before this past year, right?
Well, the last year was the first year.
Right, yeah. Or this year.
2014.
2014 was the first year.
Go, go there.
Do you put it on? I think we just used it though. We just don't get it.
Yeah. Yeah, the rent that we, but there's.
That's what we did in all of 14?
Yeah.
So they didn't bill us anything until October of 14?
I mean, that's what I'm talking about. And some of those were not the full year.
So is that for the three different ones there? 25, 51, and 76?
I think yes. Because I, yes, I think so. But I think the one is still permanent.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not in any way saying I want to short them money or anything. I just want them to.
I don't either. I mean, that's a fine agreement. When I look at that, it's like we're paying one of them 2,500 and the other one we're paying 76.
Well, we have. One is only like a third. One, we only pay a third of the utilities.
Right.
And two of them we pay all because we're there 24/7. One, we're not there.
But the truck's still there, right? But people aren't there.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know if they take the truck back to their.
Well, the only one that's not there 24/7 is Southwest, Eric County Park. The others are there 24/7.
Right. So two of them bill us 100% and one only bills it like a third or half or something. Same thing.
I'm good with just changing the agreement and just calling it rent. I don't put an upper that everybody's agreeable to. I mean, to pay the utilities, I mean, what does it matter? It's this or that. I mean, if it's, and if there's a yearly increase because their costs are going up, I mean, that's okay.
And I'm, I'm fine with reevalu-, I mean, if you want to sit me or utilities for the whole year what they actually were and we want to reevaluate it every year during the budget and whether your rent needs to go up or down, I'm fine with that. I just want a good way to get it out of our budget in a timely period. So I'm actually better taking it up for it.
We can change it to just to rent and say we're paying so much per year in rent.
Why couldn't we? I mean, that's, that's, that's what we're doing.
That's what we're doing. So that's why, that's why paying utilities is kind of.
I mean, it's either that or they need to change the utility in those places to come to us that we pay them directly or something so that we.
No.
I mean.
I'd rather just pay them rent.
Maybe we just have Mike just talk to them about coming up with what their yearly utilities are instead of paying utilities.
And the rents, the rents.
Well, I guess that's the part you talked to them about and they're not.
And he could go back to it again if you guys are really serious about it, because he was saying that they didn't want to overcharge us or undercharge us based on the agreement. So that's why they didn't want to go with the flat amount. They wanted to make sure they charge us what their actual expenses are.
Well, I get that. But I mean, if it's $7,700 this year and $8,000 next year, I mean, let's take a look at that or let's just come up with their rent amount. We got one bay, we got one garage and then we got, you know, maybe we're sharing a kitchen or whatever. We're sleeping quarters. I don't know.
You can have a real estate guy decide by square foot.
Yeah, but I charge about $200 an hour.
Lawyers charge more.
I mean, you're right. It screws up the budget when they don't get their bills in.
Right. If I'm, if I'm paying, you know, 15 months in one year and I'm paying six months to the next year, I can't budget what that is and I can't predict what it is. I can put in there what I think a whole year is.
Well, they're paying utilities all year long, so there's no reason that we just couldn't cut checks every quarter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just make a rent.
Make a rent. So that's what I would do.
I think that's cleaner.
I mean, maybe they charge us a little more, but.
Yeah, and if they come out ahead, if they come out ahead.
Yeah. Just better for their operation. Go buy some stuff. Go buy some stuff that.
So are you going to have the sheriff come back and talk about his four? EMS, are you wanting to hold off on that until after the year? And then make a transfer then, or do you want to talk to Mike before the end of the year or the? I know we tried to do, make some changes out there that we want to hold off on talking about new positions or would you want him to come in too?
So what were the positions again?
Two paramedics and a supervisor.
So is the two paramedics adding a truck or we're just going to have two?
It's going to reduce part-time and overtime, right?
So we're just. Well, I guess scheduling wise, are they going to have an extra paramedic on during the time?
I was being facetious.
I don't know what the.
And then I guess the supervisor, do we have like, we need supervisors during these periods of time and we want to make sure we have cover? I mean, what's the reasoning?
Well, the, yeah, cover the day shift. Two EMS field supervisors, share split duties, you know, seven days a week.
So there's currently one and add another. So that they be covered every day during the day?
Uh, 12-hour shifts, uh, so they work seven to seven. They work three days one week, four days the next, and they switch. That would cover Saturdays and Sundays.
Okay, so.
Here, you want a copy of this?
I have that in here.
You want a copy? Here.
I think I got it.
You got it?
I don't think I got it.
One December 15. Immediately merge the. Don't we have three supervisors already?
I got it.
Yes.
Okay, we got three supervisors. We got one director. There's 168 hours in a week. So they should be able to cover it, right?
What's that?
We got 168 hours in a week, so we have three supervisors and one director. They ought to be able to cover a full week.
Well, we got, we got two.
So I don't see any reason to add another supervisor.
So two of our supervisors are dispatchers. That's all they can do is dispatch. So they work opposite shifts and dispatch during the day. So this is talking about having a field supervisor on.
So currently does our field supervisor drive the QRB?
Yes.
Yes.
So they would be working opposite shifts, so that.
Yeah, so the QRB can rerun Saturday.
Yeah, I'd like to see the QRB be utilized more.
But that would also put a supervisor on just be seven days a week, but only during the day?
Why does supervisor got to be the only one that can operate that QRB, I guess?
I don't think that's the only one.
So they never then have anything to do with that, right?
Well, we were just talking about adding the QRB, so I'm trying to figure out if these two will be sharing one?
That it wouldn't be at the same time. They would be on staff at the same time of day.
Well, they're not, first thing, the two EMS field supervisors will work opposite shifts. So they would, and I don't know this for a fact, they would work like a 7A to 7P day shift. They'd work a 12-hour shift. They'd work three days one week, 36 hours. They'd work four days a night. So one week you'd work 36 and next week you'd work 48. So you have four hours overtime in a two-week period. Right? So they'd, they'd work opposite. So I don't know.
Just sort of system. How are you separating seven days a week with a 12-hour shift? One works three, one works four?
Well, it's just a day shift. You're not covering 24/7.
But seven days a week, they're working 12 hours, one works three, one works four, and then they switch.
Yeah.
Okay. Seven. There, I'm just trying to follow along.
And then, of course, you know, he's having problems filling that 7P shift there at South Ridge. That's how he wants to take that one to the 24-hour shift. I mean, I, I don't have a problem with that. Makes it easier to fill that.
So where's the two extra paramedics? Well, they're taking two 12-hour shifts to make it into 24, so those people would still be working.
Well, he's got some other things that he's wanting to do here too. So if you look down there, increase the hours on the jail truck to a 12-hour truck, 7A to 7P, seven days a week.
Well, that's just taking an eight-hour shift, so an eight to a 12, right?
Right, but it's running Saturday and Sunday too. And then there's also something about a 4P to 12A, eight-hour shift on Saturdays and Sundays.
But there again, he's wanting to use part-time staff to do that. That's going to be reoccurring.
Right.
I mean, even with those positions, he did want to increase part-time about that 15,630 in overtime. So we're talking about an additional 150,000. Those three positions and part-time and overtime that would affect. So more closer on the same as the sheriff, but. Sounds very dumb because it's just two positions plus the promotion. Are creating a new supervisor.
Yes. So is it required to have a supervisor and dispatcher all the time?
No, that's just how it ended up.
Yeah.
Okay, one of those supervisors be field supervisor?
One was a supervisor and then the other one was put into the dispatch, I think, because they had some health or physical issues that they couldn't still do the ambulance, right?
Kind of grouping them.
It's important to have a very, a very knowledgeable person in dispatch to assist other people. So, you know, whether they're truly a supervisor or a very skilled person to assist people in what they want to do.
Does there need to be some variation there though? Does it need to be like a dispatch supervisor or lead supervisor and then a dispatcher? And then you have something that's totally different than the field supervisor? I mean, does.
We're getting down on the weeds. If we do that, then let's set this up as a whole different meeting because if we're going to go in there and modify how the ambulance is running and we're going to, I think, something, I'll go micromanage it. Then let's sit down and micromanage it and go through it all and have a dry race board and start. I'm not for all these new positions. I mean, it was working before.
I guess my big thing in, in looking at it, I know last year we got really in-depth into like part-time and overtime, trying to figure out, you know, is there something? I know that there's some part-time staff that go over 40 hours a week almost every, every week. So is there positions that need to be added full-time to take some of that off of a part-timer? I mean, because if you're working 40 hours a week already as a part-timer, is that telling me that you need an additional full-time staff? Or is it just the fact that that person's filling in so much and you don't know when they're going to work that I don't know.
And I'm fine with that if it comes and says, look, I'm using this part-time so much and overtime. I want to add one FT, but I'm going to eliminate some part-time and overtime. And that's not what I'm seeing here. I'm seeing, I'm going to change some shifts. We even have one where there's the 7A to 7P shifts and the extra person that will be left over can be assigned to QRB doing supervisor duty. So it looks like there'd be a person left over from that shift. And then we're still going to add another spot.
Well, in supervisor, you're just going to promote somebody up, so you're not.
I thought you wanted another position. Am I wrong there?
He wants two paramedics and a supervisor, which in my mind was a promotion.
Three positions? Or you got two positions plus a promotion?
I got two positions plus a promotion.
That's what I'm, that's the way I was looking at it, but.
Okay, I could be wrong. I was looking.
I don't know. I just, I just.
Okay, so two and a promotion.
Yeah, I just assumed.
I'd be more for the promotion than filling in a, adding a couple of full-timers. I don't see where we're needing to add the full-timers unless it's to reduce our time and overtime.
So I think, I think this conversation needs to get a little more in-depth because if we address some of the transfer issues that we have, it may eliminate some needs in the evening, at night.
Yeah.
Of course, we're going to have to address that with some other people.
Yeah, and we didn't get, we need to do that very soon.
But, but if we decrease the number of long-distance calls and calls that we're running at night, it may increase the number that we have to do during the day.
And that's why I think setting this up as a reserve for later on, when you're three months out or into these other issues of.
I don't, I don't want to wait three months.
Okay, or however long it takes.
No, I think it's going to be free.
I think I'm fine with putting it in the reserve, and when we address it in the next couple of weeks.
That we need to do. I mean, are you even ramping us up?
No, no, I'm not. As long as I was thinking it would go into next year.
No, if you're, if you're done by whenever we approve in January, we can put it where it needs to go. It's just.
I just, I certainly wouldn't be done.
I'm ready to do something today.
I got to be somewhere.
I was just teasing.
I'm serious. I'm, let's keep it all rolling. I mean, I slowed down on some of this land stuff and I never even thought about it.
And we need to get going.
But I got to be somewhere just as soon as I can afternoon. I can come back this afternoon. We can spend another hour or two on it if you want to.
I mean, I was just being facetious, but I mean, I'm ready to, I make it, I'm ready to make a decision. I'm ready to move forward. And if we make, if it doesn't work, we can change. I mean, it's not, it's not that we have to, you know. We can act quickly. We can have a meeting. We can change stuff and so, you know, but all, always needs to include Mike and move it forward, so.
I browsed through these 63 pages of EMS reports and I don't, I didn't see anything that was a red flag in there.
Right.
So I don't know if we need to have maybe Kevin and Mike come up here and explain it and say, here's what needs to be addressed right now. Did you, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it?
I did, yeah.
It's a, it's interesting report. It's got a lot, a lot of information in it.
I don't know how confidential some of that is too, but.
I think, you know, some of it, there's some of them you look at and there's a whole lot of people doing a whole lot of the work and it kind of makes you wonder.
Uh huh.
So if that's kind of along the lines that you were talking about.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll stop that.
And I'd like to set that as a standalone meeting sometime. Maybe we go over there and just sit down. I'm not so sure that's non-disadministrative. We can do that anytime we wanted to. We're not, we're working on trying to make that better by just helping with the, looking from the outside in. Essentially, we're consultants on the outside of it. But if we want to have it as a, as a meeting, we can.
You just want to know what we're going to do. And you can have a closed session if you're talking about.
Get your permission.
The need to tell no one. I'm here to help.
Hey, you can be nice. You're on the chair, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah.
So did you say we got a short agenda next week?
So far, but it will, it will.
Yeah.
Kind of like yesterday, we.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Sheriff.
When are we going to talk to Sheriff? Because he came down a while ago. We kind of punted that.
What's our calendar look like next week?
I'd like to keep Monday open. I've got some schedule on Monday.
About Wednesday. We'll do something Wednesday morning.
I got a bank, I got a bank board.
What time?
From 7:30 till about 11:00.
All right, you can surely get out lower. What?
Well, how about Tuesday afternoon?
And I do want to give you, these are your department heads. They're evaluations.
Sam, you do them also.
I gave you all of them.
It's your first one.
I know, I, yeah.
What? Why?
And the merit salaries are on the front. So if you want a closed session to discuss those, you can.
Girl.
All right.
All we need is like a.
She's wonderful. He's wonderful.
So were you here last year when we, we did these and then we came together and then we brought everybody in and gave them a copy of our evaluation?
I didn't say anything bad. I.
I'm not going to say anything bad.
I, no.
So anyway, that's what we did.
Do you need these bits 15?
Well, not necessarily, but what we did is, so we did the evaluations and we brought each one in individually and we just kind of talked to them and just told them, you know, what they needed to work on and what they were doing well. And then what we did, like last year, we did some adjustments and so our reasoning behind why we gave somebody this or that, so.
You're getting your 25-year certificate, right, Debbie? Hey, we got the Christmas saying Friday.
Yes.
Don't tell me. I'm going to get something special for you.
Yes.
Yes. I know we're staying in recess at 4:30.
I love recess. I'm on second.
All the papers.